All right, we have a full room tonight. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Samantha Decord. I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board, number 36, and I'm calling this meeting into order. Today is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. We are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Maile, um, Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebX. We do have a full agenda tonight, so to keep our items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. If you wish to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone. That's my left, your right. Those joining us on WebX, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, please state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes, officials' monthly reports under three minutes, and presenters under 10 minutes. Sergeant at Arms will be keeping time, so please end your comments when the timer goes off. I will also ask you to conclude your comments. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your manao on our agenda items and remember to treat others with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. Now, before we move on to our first agenda item, we're gonna go ahead and open in pule. So if I can ask you all to close your eyes and bow your head. Father, we just come before you in this time, and we thank you, Lord, that we come together as a community. Father God, strong for you, Lord Jesus, with the full intention to rep our, represent our community. So, Lord, I just pray that you give us wisdom. I thank you that we can continue to collaborate with each other, Lord, and that we leave here tonight, Lord, with the understanding that we can move forward together, whether there is disagreement, whether there is a difference of opinions. Father, we are one moku, uh, one family, one community, and we thank you for this time. And we give you all the praise and all the honor in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. And thank you all very much. Uh, we are going to move to our first agenda item, Honolulu Fire Department. Uh, if you can go ahead. Are you on virtual? Oh, there you are. Okay, please go ahead and unmute yourself and give your report. You are muted, so you'll need to unmute yourself. No. We see you, um, Honolulu Fire Department. If you could unmute yourself. Honolulu Fire Department, uh, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I think you're seeing the Honolulu Police Department.
Okay, Honolulu Fire Department, we're gonna go ahead and move on to HPD, and then we'll come back to you. Okay, thank you so much. I see Sergeant Fumi with us. If you could unmute yourself and give the report unless, um, somebody else wants to go, but go ahead. Yep, we can hear you. Thank you so much.
Hello, everybody. Aloha. Sergeant Fumi, Mora Oka with HPD District 8, Community Policing, here tonight to, uh, provide the August, uh, stats, uh, sorry. Uh, also online are Lieutenant Louis Ferreira and Corporal Vernon Kleinschmidt. Corporal Pagan had some, uh, personal matters to take care of, so he's not with us tonight, but, um, yeah, so the August stats, uh, sorry, August meeting, uh, this, this is July stats. So for motor vehicle thefts, uh, month of July, we had 28 for the district, five in our area, burglaries, 18, uh, one in Nanakuli Maile, uh, thefts, 174 in the district, 26 in our area, unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, uh, that's car break-ins, that's 39 for the district, four in our area, uh, total citations issued, 171 for the month. Total cost per service was 6,615. Uh, total calls in my, uh, Nanakuli was, uh, 1,172. Don't really have any announcements tonight. Uh, we can go straight into any questions or comments.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, questions, board members? Any questions, board members? We'll go to community. If you have any questions, community, please line up to the microphone. Uh, if not, we will go ahead to virtual. I don't see anybody virtual. Okay, very good. Well, that's it for Honolulu Police Department. Thank you guys so much for joining us. Please be safe out there. Honolulu Fire Department, thank you. Honolulu Fire Department, do you want to try to unmute yourself again? Jeffrey is going to request, um, do you see the request? Yeah, we'll go ahead and try you back again. Um, before we move on, uh, we do have a virtual hand online. Patty Kahana-Moku, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself and ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, can you hear me? Thank you. My question, um, is for the, um, HPD Sergeant Fumi. And I understand there is no other questions. I'm surprised with everything going on around the community. So my question is with the, um, Honolulu Police Department and CPT, because of the numerous increase that's going around in YNI calls of the shooting and the crime increase, can you, can you describe what kind of community engagement HPD is putting together along the YNI coast?
So, uh, as far as enforcement, uh, you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, as far as enforcement, we, we've had increased, uh, officers, uh, on our side of the island for the time being. So I think this weekend was, uh, at least no shootings, uh, violent incidents of that nature. So, uh, we had, um, officers with their blue light on, uh, posted at various, uh, beach parks on our side, uh, just to show presence. And, uh, so that's the enforcement side, uh, to put it in a nutshell. We just have, uh, increased manpower right now on our side because of all the, uh, violent incidents recently. As far as engaging the community, uh, you know, we've, uh, CPT has been doing, uh, presentations, uh, at the schools. I think we have to focus on the youth, you know, um, to let them know that, uh, what, uh, what's been going on is not right and, you know, reinforce the good things. Uh, so we've been working with the churches, the pastors, um, and, uh, we're trying to put together a mentorship program, you know, like, um, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Uh, we had a meeting last night with, um, the church community, uh, to discuss, trying to get something like that together. And we also have been doing, uh, presentations at the schools, just, uh, as CPT to, uh, address, like, cyberbullying, which is pretty common nowadays, and also, uh, you know, like vaping and, uh, the illegal substances and things like that, and to have more pride in, uh, themselves and, uh, things like that. And whatever else is requested, uh, we put together a little presentation and we've been addressing whatever issues are a problem in the schools. Um, yeah, so we've been doing that upon request.
Okay, um, thank you. And so thank you for that. And with that, you know, I know the increase of cars and sheriff cars and HPD is all along the coast. Um, you know, another suggestion is just not having the cars and HPD and sheriffs just park there. And yes, it's intimidating to the community, yes, but also to get out of their cars and to, to bridge and to communicate and to network and got to, to, to touch and talk to the youth or talk to the people on the park or, or stuff, not just sit in the car with the lights and then, you know, they're on their phone or their computers, but I think they need to kind of get out and they need to engage more with the youth and along the boat harbors. And it's just a suggestion that I've been watching along when I drive around and I see the police and sheriffs, they're just sitting in their car. I think it, it has a lot to do with engaging, and that's why, um, community engagement is so important. But thank you very much, Sergeant. Aloha. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We do have a community. Uh, is, are you, is your question for HPD?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your name.
Connie Victor. Um, I have a question. In your stats, there is no violent crimes, kidnappings, fights, assaults, disturbances of that nature. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so, um, thanks for the question. So these stats are standardized across the island. These were what was requested of the Honolulu Police Department by the Neighborhood Board to, uh, be reported every month.
So what about like the violent crime, like kidnappings? The hair that's been happening in our neighborhood was on the news the other week.
Yeah, um, if you want stats, uh, you can actually go on to honolulupd.org and the stats are available. Whatever you, uh, want to look at, they're, uh, provided, uh, you know, for you to pull up whatever you wanna, uh,
Because we see all the gun violence on the news and all that, but we know more, all the kind of news. You guys gotta share that too. It's just not just gun violence. People getting stabbed too. And I have a lot of question. There was a call at Depo's the other week where one person who had a camping permit called you guys for help and was kicked out of their camping ground because of the people who was arguing with them was louder. How come not the person with the camping permit who paid for them on the site had to leave?
Uh, I don't know about that specific situation, so, uh, I'd have to research that. Where was that? Depot's?
Depo's. You guys had like 13.
By the parking lot?
Yeah.
Uh, and when was that?
Other week. Yeah. Tops coming in.
I can try and look that up, but, um, I kinda need specific information.
They didn't see the parking lot, they didn't ask you guys, like, they didn't pay for them. They was, they was there by law. Still not a guy's.
Yeah, so, so I think because this is, uh, pertaining to a specific case, I think Sergeant Fumi, if you can maybe get some information, uh, to us offline, uh, then we would be able to, um, maybe answer some of these concerns. Okay? Thank you so much. Uh, go ahead, Nate. State your name.
Can I respond to that, please? Hi, I'm, um, Apuana Tector with Parks and Rec, and we've discussed that as far as boundaries. Um, so we were requesting from the city to make sure that it's charted because people are encroaching on areas that infringe on the people that paid so that we can assist before it goes to HPD. So our next Parks and Rec meeting will be, um, next month, the second Wednesday. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Board Member Tector. Please state your name.
Aloha, everybody. My name is James Cowles. I'm from Maile. Thank you, Madam Chair, member, board members. I don't have a question. I just have a statement for the Sergeant. I want to say thank you very much to the Police Department for sending out all the police officers out this side that can come out this side. I know it holds the Honolulu Police Department to a disadvantage. I know they're shorthanded. And every time I go, when I've been going to the YNI mall, like today, I've been hearing people talking about, "Oh, two cops, we get out here now." Hey, that's a good thing. We've been asking for police enforcement out here, out this side, but all we've been told is we're shorthanded. Well, unfortunately, had to take this incidences that we've had out here to bring the extra police officer out here, but I just want to say thank you for the, uh, HPD for stepping up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we echo that as well. Patty, you're online. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just so sorry, Madam Chair. I wanted to clarify, you know, I think what the board needs to look at is the parks, because Depot Parks is not a camping, camping park anyway. And so it calls that 10, and it's not a park, um, camping park, uh, beach park. You have even Zablan is a camping zone park. You have Nanakuli Park, and then you go down to Maile. You have your designated camping area. So already what was stated was the, the, uh, person who was there at Depot's was not at a camping area. So that's what's going on. So I think the board needs to take a look at all the camping zone areas where it's, where it's permitted to camp. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Patty, I think that was a picnic permit that they was giving. They go down, they pay for them, and then then can hold whatever you like at the park. I've done it before. That's the kind of permit.
Okay, we'll look into that as well. Picnic permit. We'll go ahead and, uh, look into that at our Parks Committee meeting. Okay, uh, very good. Uh, we're moving on. HFD will probably give you one more try, and then, uh, we'll just have you submit your report online and we'll share it with the board. Oh, I think they're off. Okay, well, hmm, on. Okay, uh, let's move on, uh, to community concerns. Uh, community, if you have any concerns, I'll ask that you, uh, line up to the microphone. Those that are in virtual, if you would like to share a community concern, please raise your virtual hand. Uh, so go ahead. You can, uh, state your name for the minutes and, uh, two minutes, please. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is, uh, Alex Cowhee, and this is Mark Kong. Uh, our concern is mostly for the Nanakuli Homestead Cemetery. So right now, Uncle Alan Cordine is, is gonna kind of retire from that. So we're just trying to form a group to help continue it. I've been working with the homestead for a couple months already, uh, trying to get authorization. Uh, right now, we're trying to, uh, fulfill the mapping. A lot of ohana is on, is being buried there, but we don't know who's, there's no marking. So we gotta try and find that out from, uh, the community, from the families, so we can fulfill that and mark everybody's grave. The other thing is the cemetery is now is locked. We lock it at night now because of security. Uh, opening gate will be for Mark and Lucy Young, which is myself, but, uh, we, it's hard when, you know, in the past, Ms. Keely used to do it before, the families, uh, Coach Allen and Shaggy used to do it before, and Mrs. Laoni. It's hard for one family. So we figured that we just gathered together as a community, we all can help each other. Yeah, so.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Opens at seven and closes at six. So if I go to the store, eight o'clock, five after eight, the store closes. Same thing like up there. So we accommodating accommodations. So the last one that was in there said, "When you leave, lock them." They were lock them. They were lock them because the sun go down eight o'clock, yeah. But, yeah, but doing that, yeah, maybe they come afar. So much things happening up at the graveyard, but that's, we go up there for therapy. Therapy. It's not about getting paid, yeah? Nobody get paid. My names does pop out. Some other organizations, and I found out, no, there's nobody. So help us. Maybe you guys can submit your family's name who's in the cemetery because we're not having nothing from the department as we speak.
Okay, uh, we'll have more discussion on that at Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Thank you. Okay, very good.
All right, Danny Wyatt, YNI Moku Coordinator. Um, I'm a little bit concerned because a lot of people aren't taking, making, or taking advantage of the campus that you have out in Maile. Um, we've had up to 550 students here before. Right now, our current population is probably about 230. Um, it's the cheapest way to get ahead in education. Okay? It's, uh, we keep on hearing about how education is too expensive. Yes, it costs too much. Students are Pell eligible, especially if they're low income. And if they're Pell eligible, they walk away with about $1,000 to cover costs outside of the textbooks and all that. Okay, so please make use of, uh, the YNI Moku anytime. Now, a couple of things that we're doing there. Uh, recently, we had a work, uh, we had, um, a fundraiser for Maui, and we, uh, generated a little bit over $7,000 last week, I think, week, last week, week before. All right, and I don't think any other campus has done that, so that kind of makes this a little bit special. Class is beginning next week, and if you're in the Maile neighborhood, you probably noticed that all the plants that the students put in have all been dug up, uh, and they're finally going to be doing the landscaping, so we're going to become much more of a benefit to the community than we have been in the past. As much as I like to give credit to our students for putting all the plants in, um, it's gonna look much more professional than it did before. And finally, I'd like to, uh, compliment whoever it was that put in the speed bumps on Kulaupuni Street because it's made a hell of a difference on slowing down traffic on that road. It's much, much safer now. There's a speed bump in, right in front of the college, another one right in front of the park, and another one a little bit further down. It's really, really done a good job at slowing down traffic, and I'm really happy to report that. Mahalo.
Very good. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Please state your name for the minutes.
Connie Victor. I know I'm German saying this for a long time that we need our police station, and we no more funding. Did we get any funding this year for the, the police station in the, in the governor's budget? We did. Okay, question also. I'm glad we got the money and then sooner the better, but is the sheriff gonna be in, involved in, in our, the kind to whether have a spot, a state police in our police station, not just Honolulu Police Department, because they cannot police everything due to the fact that it's not their jurisdiction unless called upon? Okay, so that's it though, but when will they start working on the construction for the police station? Because desperately need them, yeah?
So, uh, we can probably continue that conversation, a little bit more dialogue when Councilmember Tapola comes up. Okay, thank you so much. Did you have a comment?
Aloha, my name is Jolen. Um, I'm from the community of, yeah, Nanakuli. I just, I just had a, I don't know if it's a question, or I just, first of all, I just kind of wanted to address the shootings out in YNI. When that happens in YNI, it really affects all of us, the Moku of YNI. And I just, you know, I had conversations with friends and we, we talked about it. I like what Patty said about engagement of the cops only because our community, we cannot be policing poverty, and that, that was a conversation that me and somebody else had. So we need to be mindful, right? Because we, we live in a community that's deprived of a lot of things. And currently, right now, we cannot be targeting people who are hardworking people, who cannot basically pay for registration, safety check, insurance. On top of that, pay for rent. So I'm just, so my thoughts is that I like the whole fact that Patty said that the cops need to come out of their parts because we don't want them targeting the wrong people in our community, people that, who are really working hard. So it takes a whole village to raise a child. It takes all of us. So, and I think I, I just want to do a kahel to the community out there, said, you know, we just gotta show up. We gotta be part of the solution. We need to be part, we, we need to be there, hold ourselves accountable as well. And I just want, I just want to just shout it out right now is that our voting is very important. I was very disappointed of our voting. So as a community, that's what we get. If we don't show up and vote, guess what, gang? This is, this is how it is. So we need to be part of it. We need to be part of the solution. We cannot have people coming in here and telling us how to do it. So I just, again, I just wanted to echo Patty that about Patty bringing that up about really having that engagement of the cops because, you know, they only can do so much as well. But we too, right? So we just, I, I just think we need to be more makaala and, and stop. We cannot, I don't know if having more cops is more, is gonna solve the problem. You know, because I, I'm serious. We cannot police poverty. That's, that's not the answer for our community, honestly. So anyway, I just, I just wanted to share my manao.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Palenti. Go ahead.
Aloha, Mauslin. I'm concerned about the, like I said, echoing the gun violence and all the violence that's happened in 96792. Eighty percent, last year, 2023, there was 80% rise in homicides. There was HPD statistics given. This past February, we lost my nine nephew by unethical hunters, illegal poachers. All these activities happening on this year, nine either shooting or shooting deaths. Seven of them on the YNI side, two of them on this side of Maile, on. I'm concerned about, it was on April 30th, we had a, uh, town hall, uh, special meeting at the Neighborhood Board concerning the DLNR, Duke Care, and, uh, negative impact that's happened in the murder of, uh, Cranston Duke Pia, my nine nephew. I know the family. But as a result, we could have had, we did not know during that time period that there were other resources that's available on state. Our District 44, District 45 representative, our 22 senator, didn't inform us there's other avenues besides HPD or Duke Care. I didn't know that State Do, uh, DoD, Department of Defense, has authority over DLNR, Duke Care in law enforcement as well. So we did not know about this kind of information. It was not shared to the community. So we're ignorant to the fact that this kind of information is deprived to us, District 45 community out there, probably District 44 as well too, but this is the 96792 entirely. And I'd like to share this past last week's, uh, Channel 4 News editorial. It was done by the mother of the shooter. His name, actually, she, her name was Paula Greenlift, son of, uh, her son is Ranston Jai Brown Castro, who did the shooting. Apparently, the boy had his back against the wall, and he had no other choice but do what he did. But she had gone to state. My son grew up here at the Boat Harbor, where there's a lot of violence. There's a lot of drugs. It's really crazy there. She said, "It's a whole different world in there, very negative, and it's not a place to grow up." So being said, this type of activities, the Boat Harbor, you have the YNI High School, you have Kamali Elementary to High School, you have YNI Intermediate. If we have this type of state negative impact, why is it there for this amount of years where this type of activities? You can't even put a bar next to a school. So I'm gonna share with you a copy, and you put that in the minutes, of Kristin Concilio's Channel 4 News editorial. This is not hearsay. They put it out there.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. All right, I see, uh, two hands online. Uh, first, I'm gonna call on Johnny May Perry and then Patty Kahana-Moku. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I've been asking HPD years ago about a mentorship with, um, HPD and the high school. There were requests made in our community by gov, by government officials. And you know, we get the brush off, you know, unfortunately, we get the brush off. We need to be more persistent. Uh, we need to know the, um, learn the government of structure and who to contact and not just take their word. Things I'm hearing tonight, I, I've said years ago, and because now we have the LNR, you know, Duke Care at the harbor, um, teaming up with HPD. So now, now someone's listening, but how long they're gonna listen? Eventually, they'll be all gone, and we continue to be in the same environment. But you know, I don't know, um, well, education is the number one, and I, I don't understand. Our children only 18, for 18 years period, and then the rest of their life to be adults. So I don't know why they're anxious to not attend to school because that's gonna carry them along the way. If they pay attention in school, learn and be curious about learning and question what is being taught, they can go a long way, but I don't understand why they're so fearful of education. That being in school is a safer environment for many of them. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Uh, Ms. Kahana-Moku, if you would unmute, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. You know, I just wanted to echo the, the, um, past speakers of what they had mentioned, you know, what Jolen and others has mentioned on what's going on with YNI. But, you know, it, it's obvious when the mayor goes on the news and when he brings out these words, says that we're gonna be helping YNI with. and when he brings out these words, says that we're going to be helping Waianae with force, force, force. I think that is totally intimidating and insulting to the community of Waianae. It shouldn't be used, the word "force", because we don't want to bring force into the community. You know, looking back, we appreciate HPD's presence. We appreciate the sheriff's presence. But this is just a temporary bandage over. It will just probably, with the state Hawaii law enforcement team, probably be a three-week, you know, attendance out there. They need to come up with a long range, how we're going to help the Waianae coast, you know, from Nanakuli to Keavau'ula. But again, again, and again, as a past former chair, I have always brought up is that we need to look at the harbor. The Waianae Harbor is way overdue for cleanliness. And poverty brings human trafficking. Poverty brings drugs. Poverty brings all of these elements with game rooms and everything. Until we clear the word "poverty" out of our community and start knocking down these game rooms and having a better word instead of using poverty, this poverty attracts that, and it attracts all of these elements to the Waianae coals. I know that churches are stepping up and organizations, but we need to take the poverty out of there. We need to re-green the community. We need to get the beaches and the parks clean. We need to get our morale up. We need to feel good about ourselves. So the elective officials should take a look at parks, maybe having it openly, having more sports available for our youth, having every, you know, having these venues for our community. But we need to get the word "poverty" and to take everything out of the community. But the Waianae Boat Harbor, after thirty years, it is not, it is an excuse to continue to have it open. And I can't figure out why the elective officials of our coals continue to enable that. We need to clear it out, and we need to have it very safe for our school and also our community. So if we're going to continue to have this, we are going to continue to have violence into the community. So I just wanted to share that, that amount of insight. Thank you for this time and opportunity. Aloha.
Great. Aloha. Thank you so much. Very good points. Thank you very much. Another community concern? Go ahead. Thank you so much.
Aloha, Chair, members of the board. Alan Cardenas Jr., senior pastor of Nono Eupona Church, one of the leaders of the Neighborhood Security Watch, where we worked with law enforcement, other caring community members to prevent, deter, and reduce crime. I'm here tonight to share that we've got to create a safer community, one family at a time, one house at a time. I'm here to let you guys know that I did contact Kali Watson, chairman of the HHL, for support. I did. That part is true. I contacted him to support his support for clearing the property lot 89 right next to the church. That property has been a problem for years. That's been a magnet for people on drugs. We have sexual predators that's been on the property, two suspected arsonists, someone that was charged for murder last November. Then this is a short list. Someone threatened to stab a four-year-old girl on the street last November. Someone that frequents that property has stabbed and killed someone on Nanakuli Beach Park. Too many problems. We're tired of being terrorized. So the part that was true is that I had asked the HHL for support to clean that property. It is an honor and a privilege to have Hawaiian homestead, to be good neighbors to Aloha Ke'akua and Aloha Ke'kai Ke'kai, love each other. But when properties are used like that for that kind of criminal activity, it's done. It's over. So that part is true. So we're going to be moving, hopefully soon, to clear up that property. The goal is to recover, restore, rehabilitate, and expedite the process to re-award the lot, which will go to homesteaders on the waitlist. What is not true is we doing kauhale on that property. That's not true. We have another 3.7 acres of property, not on government land, not on DHL, on church land. Hopefully, we can work with the governor's office, with the mayor's office, to come into a mutual agreement that we can have a spiritual, just do what we do best, to prevent, deter, reduce crime, to break the cycle of physical, emotional, sexual abuse that's happening in families, the physical, emotional neglect, and the household or family dysfunctions like domestic violence, incarceration, substance abuse, mental illness, and so forth. So we, that's the three things that we're doing. We're going to clean that property. We want to do it soon. No kauhale on Pua Av, and we are going to malama the residents on this island. I had frank conversation with the mayor's office, the governor's office. I personally think the whole island has to bear the burden and the kuliana of taking care of the homeless in their communities. We're going to roll over here, but we're going to take care of our own. It's not that we, that's aloha. When everybody take care of their own, that's aloha. So again, that's what I'm here for, to set the record straight in regards to the property lot 89 Pua Av. Recover, restore, rehabilitate, and re-award that lot to homesteaders on the list. No kauhale, and we're going to malama our kuliana. Together, we better. So thank you so much. My name is Alan Cardenas Jr. I approve the message. Love you, guys. Thank you, guys, so much. Aloha. God bless HPD, Patty. Love you so much. Everybody else online. Love you, guys. Aloha.
Very good. Thank you very much, Pastor Alan, and thank you for clarifying. There were some questions, and there was some speculation out there. So thank you very much for bringing clarity. Go ahead. Community concerns?
Aloha, I'm Kalei Sauzero. You know, I know what our community is going through. But we ourselves cannot just deal with it, okay? We need our government. And all they've been doing is putting the pressure on the community. That's the whole reason we are not going to get it fixed. Because now the government, state, and city wants to collaborate, and they're coming to the Neighborhood Board and said, "Okay, you guys are going to have to come up with paperwork and stuff like that, solutions, and then pass it on to them." What the hell was your first solution twenty years ago? I didn't see a good solution. All I seen is money buckets. You want a solution? You talk to the whole 96792, not a certain groups or anything, because it's all our kuliana. 96792 is from Kahina Point, Kaihe Point, all the way to Kahina Point. So we got to remember, we cannot allow this government to tell us what we're going to do or tell us what to do. We need to put our feet down and demand. They're getting paid. The group's not getting paid unless you get it on special envelope. I sure hell ain't when I speak on behalf of my kapuna, Mr. Anton Krunkie. How many times we bring issues up to you, sir? Everything's all good, and all of a sudden, you MIA. You miss it. You know, you guys come inside here, you guys had gone to the shelters, you guys had gone to see the farm. Get things done. Don't go inside there, go make, take picture, lay, and everything, and you cannot communicate with them. You cannot communicate. You guys got so much available shelters out there. But the people cannot afford it. If you are a senior citizen, how are you going to afford if you've got $700? Then you turn around, you have your cell phone, you have medication. A lot of them, they retired already. They deserve the respect from the government. And not being allowed to get bullied all the time or make the choice. They electric their bills, you know? Gentrification, our government gentrification is the cause and the root of the problem in 96792. Gentrification. They're going to continue billing, but who are they billing for? It's short enough for our people. Think about that. Can our people afford? No, they cannot. So you got to think, it's not everybody, you know, it's, we getting, not only our people here, we get it one way, and they know it. And we're going to continue having that one way unless we open our waha. Enough is enough.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. We, no? Okay, otherwise, okay, so.
I just wanted to echo Patty's comment. I know me and her piggybacking, but she brought up a good thing about parks and wrecks. I think that could be one of the good solutions for our community. Having more parks and wrecks, open spaces for our community to gather, along with having, you look at other affluent communities, they get swimming pools, they get more parks. We don't have anything like that, and I know we have all the beaches, but we deserve swimming pools as well. We should be having two Kahana Moku's coming out from Waianae in the Olympics. So I just wanted to echo that. So Tupola, since, I mean, you're here, like, we need more open spaces, more parks, bigger parks. As our community is growing, we don't have enough parks. Nanakuli kids are literally playing on each other because it's no room. So I'm glad you're here, because that is something that I want everybody to know, that our community need more parks, places for our kids to be. They're just upcoming athletes, so we need, we need spaces. And I just wanted to share that, because one of my aunties who live on Hawaiian Homestead literally had to have somebody and ask her if she could play in her backyard, the kids could practice. So I just throwing it out there. So these are the things that are happening. People are approaching people's houses, especially the ones that live in Nanakuli in the old homestead that have big yards. So I'm just saying, so these are things that happen. If you could help us in the future to make that happen with a swimming pool, because I know I'm not the only one doing a shout-out for that. But thank you, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Palenti. Yep, last community concern, and we're going to move on. Go.
Aloha, Chair, board, Richard Lanford. I think it's still community concerns. Okay, one of the things that I found out today, and it's kind of disappointing, was that they moved our areas to renew our license to drive for the seniors. Well, I don't know if it's everybody, but I was trying to find out for seniors. So there's only four places that you can do it. So it's Hawaii Kai, it's Kailua, Waiala, and Procedi. So I asked, "How can Waianae guys go all the way down Procedi for, for, you know, get your license?" So it's a satellite city hall that's, I guess it's located in the mall. I'm not sure. I'm still asking a lot of questions for that and your handicap decal and stuff like that. So nowadays, everything is automated, so it's easier for them, but it's kind of painstaking for us, you know? And I'm kind of upset, because we're the guys that painful, you know, for treat us like that, especially for our community, from Waipahu all the way down to Keavau'ula, that we have to go that far just for renew our license when we have, they brag about their satellite city hall that they open up, or the city hall, mini city hall that they have in Kapole. So I don't know if we have any
Yeah.
able elected officials inside the room. But if they are any, then I would appreciate their help, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lanford. We have council member Tupola, and we have mayor's rep, Erwin, here. So either of them can weigh in and, yes, if we can get your response. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Perry. We're going to move on to actually presentations. We do have a full agenda. So we're going to go ahead and move on to.
I understand, Chair, but I see Rep Takuta's staff is online, and I don't see her listed on the agenda. That's my comment.
We'll go ahead and address that at that time, but thank you so much. Uncle Sparky, did you have a community concern?
Community concern?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it mixed with the presentations, but July 1996, I was arrested in Makua along with a whole bunch of other Hawaiians for homelessness. The cops, actually, back then, we talked to the sheriff's department, Capi Caminos, DLNR, the head of the DLNR, and the rest still happened. We were looking for a long-term solution to homelessness. This is over twenty years later, and we're still talking about figuring it out. And we still haven't come up with a solution. All we got to do is say, "Pau." And the thing is, the kauhale idea we've been discussing out of Waianae, the Kuna Council, was looking at a solution, not waiting for the board of directors here or the legislature or the county to come up with a solution, because they have policies, "Why no can?" We're looking for solutions of what can? And I don't see any can that comes out of here. All the stuff I heard so far tonight was about no can, not in my neighborhood. Got a place that Piliki up, go cut the grass. Get the cops to come stand next to you while you cut the grass. I mean, the excuse is, we not going because it's private property. Undivided interest of every square inch of Hawaiian and any Hawaiian that is homeless. We have failed them. So all of this stuff Hawaiian homes, it's all BS. Get them on the land, put them in a tent. Because what happened, one of the kapuna that was in, what's the shelter? Kukui, they took her out, gave her one tent, and put her on the beach. And what happens is that when you're arrested, they feed you, they give you shelter, they give you medical. But we don't do that to the homeless. What's up with our mentality? Where are we going wrong? For instance, pu'ho'ua is a thought we should be thinking about and not only kauhale. Where's the safe place we can go? We got so many laws about no can. We always got a boundary, "Why no can do stuff?" Can. Stop saying no can. Stop saying, "It's only my community." You guys have no right talking for us.
Okay.
I'm not going to shut up.
Very good. No, 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 no. I want you to save that, because we do have a portion on the agenda that we are going to discuss kauhale. So we want to make sure that we give our presentations time to have that open discussion. So at this point, we're going to move on to presentations. First up, we do have in Section A, State of Hawaii Kauhale Initiative, presented by Office of Homelessness and Housing Solutions Director John Mizuno. I do not see him in the room.
I am representing John Mizuno tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Unfortunately, we're not able to have the presentation other than John Mizuno, somebody from his staff. So, but, but we are going to open in our discussion, so I want you to weigh in when we do open. So, so we're going to, yeah, so we're going to allow community to weigh in. So you guys hold that thought, okay? Okay, but since John Mizuno is not actually in person, I unfortunately did not get any kind of response from him that he will be not attending. So for right now, I'm going to go ahead, since we do have in our protocol, according to the board, is to hear who is in person. So we're going to go ahead and move forward to Section B, our Honu, Homeless Outreach and Navigation for the Unsheltered Program, Nanakai Beach Park, starting November, excuse me, September 24th. We have Anton Krunkie, and he's going to be presenting. And then right after that, community, we are going to come back to discuss the kauhale initiatives. But since Anton is in person, we're going to give him that regard and give him the floor. So go ahead and take it away, Anton.
Thank you, Chair, board members, and community members. Anton Krunkie, I'm the Director of Department of Community Services for the City and County of Honolulu. So just in context, we're going to talk tonight and seek out your input and ask if we can bring Honu out here. But just for context, the Department of Community Services does the human services activities for the City and County of Honolulu. So in our department, I have multiple divisions. I have the Elderly Affairs Division, which works with our kapuna, Meals on Wheels, How You Can Age Well in Place, Call Centers, all of those activities. We also have Work Hawaii, which also has a satellite office out here in Waianae. And, you know, they do job training, they work with incarcerated folks. We also have, they do direct outreach, and they also have a rent-to-work program where they can do job training, and you get a job, and they can pay your rent. And it's a good way to get to a place with rent that kind of gets around the whole voucher system, because those are weights for those. We also have, I'm the Public Housing Authority for the City and County of Honolulu. So that's all the Section 8 vouchers, all the home loans, home rehabilitation loans, and those activities. Also, all the HUD money comes into the Department of Community Services. So all the service providers that we fund, we fund those through grants and such that they do work out here, KWA, you know, Waianae Comp Health, and many more. We also have the Grants and Aid Program that directly funds service providers. That's in our department. And in addition to those, we have Child Care Coordinator is in our department, and homelessness is in our department. So we've got a lot of activity going on. And tonight, we're going to talk about Honu. I, Melia Sun, and her team are here that run it. But that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. Okay? So next slide. So Honu really is a program that started. It gives us a capability on a 24-by-7 basis to always have beds available. And this is very important for activity on the street, whether it be CORE, which is the Crisis Outreach and Response Engagement Team, or HPD, when they engage somebody, or a service provider when they engage somebody. And that moment is there where they'll accept a bed. Honu is there for them. Next slide. So, you know, as much as, as people say, there's a solution to homelessness. It is a process. There are many different solutions going on all at the same time. And to say that nothing's worked, we, yes, we still have quite a few homeless. They've kind of tapped out it and. kind of tapped out and and come down a little bit, but you know, just in the time that I've been here, and I I'm not a public servant for many years, I just started in government with this mayor, right? I've housed over a thousand five hundred people, right? So those are thousand five hundred people, plus we we in medical treatment, over five hundred people. So there are a lot of people that we're having successes with, but there's just a lot more to deal with, and we understand that it's just a lot to deal with. And and no matter how many that we can house or treat and help, if there's homeless still out there, there's much work to be done. So as complex as homelessness is, as complex as it is, our strategy in the City and County of Honolulu is really two parts. That sounds simplistic, but it's not. The first part is, is how many creative things can we do to get someone to be willing to engage the system? Anything we can do, right? We we have this program that I'm gonna talk to you tonight, we have CORE, we have um diversion, so when someone gets arrested, can we take them to a program? We're opening up medical respite, so when you pick somebody up, they need medical care rather than than do a nine-one-one call and go to the hospital, we can put them in medical respite, they can spend months, you know, recovering and then be ready for housing. Um, all of those things, we, everything creatively we tend to get somebody willing to engage the system. Then the other thing I do, I spend all my time thinking about the resources that we can bring to bear to service those decisions, right? And it changes, markets change and and our populations change. We found that especially with the deployment of CORE, which came from our Emergency Services Division in the in the ambulances, they're very medically oriented, right? And so we found that there are a a bunch of people, right, that have issues and they're homeless, and housing isn't the solution, treatment is the solution, right? And we have to find a place, whether it's care homes, you know, foster homes, it's, you know, treatments in hospitals, you know, uh, treatments in in centers, they're they're not ready to be housed. Housing would not be a good solution, right? Then we have folks that, you know, housing could be a solution, and then we have to do everything we can so that they have successful housing. In other words, are they ready? You know, can they can they can they live live that way? And I think this is places where different communities can really make a difference. I think churches can make a great difference there in in helping people and working with them on their journey uh to get back on the life that uh will really be productive for them. So we we look at all sorts of resources, and and these medical respite's we open up are very important. I know there's a big push, and you're gonna talk about Kalahalis today, but with all the shelters that we're doing and and those kind of activities, they don't focus on uh, they can't take families, right? Because they're they're places where you have to walk outside the house to go to the bathroom, and you can't have kids doing that, right? You you need units and such. So at the same time, all of that work's going on, we're bringing three family shelters into play. We already started one at uh Waikiki Vista in town with Catholic Charities, and that one already has has housed in that system eighty people off the street, right? Eighty folks off families, right? And so what we did, we created one floor, twelve rooms, units for um sheltering right off the street, and then we gave them three more floors of units where they can put them in for supportive housing, and while they're in supportive housing, they can work on them for permanent supportive housing. And so like I said, eighty people already, it's only been open for two months, two two of the families are in permanent supportive housing and moving along. We'll have one that'll open up in September in Wahiwah, Family Promise will run that one, and that'll be a nice uh family uh shelter there. And then in Ha'ula, we have another one opening up, the state has a solicitation out right now to service providers to run that that family shelter. So while I was talking about solicitation, I noticed a comment earlier, I have two notice for fundings that are out right now. I have one that is for um building infrastructure and um building villages, right? And it may not be the the Kalahali set down, it's a building a real village, thirteen million dollars of congressionally directed funds that we went and got, so that that solicitation's on out on the street, right? And we also have our CDBG solicitation that's on the street, and I know there's interest on the coast here uh for that, so we're we're moving those along. But again, anything creatively we can do, whether it's people's influence, systems' influence, services to get somebody to be willing to engage the system, leadership is very important, your community leadership, and then constantly analyzing resources to serve those decisions. Next chart. So Honu's been around for for a bunch of years, I'm I'm gonna kind of walk you through some of the places we've been. Uh, we have been to this community before, and so we're asking uh you tonight if we can come back out and be resident in your community again. Next, next chart. So these are some of the places that we've been, and um and so we're hoping the Nani Kai Beach Park that uh is is a site that the parks is will allow us to come, we can do coordinated activity before we do that. Uh, hopefully you had a good experience with that before, and I'll share some of those numbers. Um, you know, we stay for ninety to one hundred and twenty days, and we'll come in and then we'll leave. But it has an opportunity to um to not only do the services at Honu does, we work in conjunction on the kind of the whole beach front there to try to span out our influence uh along the beaches there, so it can have an effect in that way with all the other activities that have been going on and people helping and cleaning up the beaches. Next slide. Okay, so it's a mobile unit, these are tents, you may have seen them before, you know, and we feed there, we do uh casework there, and and we work with folks that uh in to move them along in their journey. And I we've been, we've been quite successful in this, and the teams that are out there, um, they've shown their successes. Next chart. So that's what it looks like, you know? We have places for people to sit and be social, we have the tents. You know, originally, they were gonna be uh tents with uh with all these congregant places inside, then COVID hit, and we went into a big uh area where we had tents, and it's turned out that people like tents. So in the big tents, which keep cool, we can put smaller tents, and that way people can have a pet, you know, they can have a little privacy and such, so it's like a room within a hotel. Next, next slide. So anyway, we really, you know, it it's it's a triage center. In other words, people come here, not to stay, but they come to go to the next place. And so we can work with them there, we can we can stabilize them, we take families, uh individuals, and and mostly we we get most of our referrals from CORE and HPD and service providers, and then we do allow some walk-ins. But we try to keep spaces open for HPD and CORE, because you know, there, especially even though the laws have validated what we do in terms of enforcement, we still like to be able to offer someone a bed uh when we come and say, you need to move, the park's closed. Okay, so that's what we do. Next slide. So really, when when we're working with folks, you know, most of the folks were able to find a shelter spot, be able to move them to a shelter, but we also have successes in moving people directly from there into permanent housing. We check on their on their documentation, do they have what they have? We have resources available, other people work with us and we do housing. I think we're also, you know, some people need treatment in the hospitals, and we'll send people to treatment in the hospitals, and sometimes we uh find a way home for people back to the mainland, and so we have taken people there and worked out for them to go back to the mainland. And then we do a lot of, and and I think there's a lot of participation here, in returning people to their families, where they've been estranged for some reason. That's why I'm so proud of this team, because you cannot do that unless you take the time to know someone's story, right? You have to have the time to know their story, know what they're doing, and then be able to work with them, and then maybe have the outreach to the family to see what is needed for reconciliation. Um, a lot of our homeless, you know, they're they have families here and there's houses here, but they're on the streets. Next slide. So you know, we we do have some admission guidelines, people have, they can't be ambulatory, you know, they have to be able to go to the bathroom, uh, you know, they can't pose a threat to somebody, we're we're careful about that. We do pay for um for HPD to be there on a twenty-four-by-seven basis, not just for the safety of our our staff, but also the safety of the of the people that are there. There are a lot of people that come to Honu as a refuge, right? It's not safe where they're at, and they can come into Honu and be safe there. Um, and then, you know, we have a set of rules.
I'm so sorry, uh, we're a little over time, so I'm gonna ask you if you could summarize the rest of your presentation.
I will, uh, next chart. And I'm gonna go back to that, next chart. Next chart. Next chart. Okay, this was the results last time we were here. So generally speaking, fifty-eight percent on a very consistent basis, fifty-eight percent of the people come into Honu, get placed, shelter, back home, to the mainland, treatment, whatever, and these were the, these were the uh statistics for the people that came at Nani Kai Beach. And so we're very successful, eighty placements out of a hundred and forty-five people coming when I was here for just a little over three months. We'd like to be able to come for four months this time, starting in the first week in September, and um that's why I'm here to present, is is for for you to know that we've we've done the work to have that available to us to do, and we hope that you'll invite us to be here. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, we'll open it up for questions, board members first, uh, Board Member Tector, Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for this presentation. Um, my question would be, of your team members, how many be it volunteer are skilled and non-skilled to show you results?
Well, we have, we have our employees, right, that are there working, and then when we're here, we can work with the community to come in, and you can you can participate in helping us feed, you can participate in activities that we have, and so we can bring in that. It doesn't run with a team of volunteers, though. It runs with a staff.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I'm trying to understand what is the outcome that you want? So when you say that you have four thousand five hundred homeless in the twenty-twenty-four point in time count, and you're housing at any specific Honu time, uh, one site, you're housing fifty, let's just say fifty, forty to fifty. That means in order to cover all four thousand five hundred, to service all four thousand five hundred, you'd have to have ninety of these Honus. But I only see in your presentation, you have one every five months, every six months. So that's mean you're gonna, it's gonna take you forty-five years to just cover forty-five hundred people at this pace. So I'm just wondering, is it a funding issue? What is the outcome? Are you trying to create a database of all these homeless so that you can refer them to services? How often are you experiencing people saying, I don't want shelter, I don't want help? So I'm trying to figure out what is the city's objective with Honu? Just having something somewhere at fifty at a time? Or is there an ultimate trying to help the state with understanding a data, creating a database? And you know, I'm just wondering, how are you gonna get the forty-five hundred out of them off the streets and into shelters? Because when I look at your Honu placement, shelter, one thousand six hundred, in five years, the program has been running, that means you did three hundred in shelters. Do you have statistics, because you keep in touch with them, how many of them went back on the street and are no longer in the shelter? Um, treatment, you treated one thousand, uh, one hundred and five in five years. That's twenty every year. So what happened with the treatment? And then you reunited with family, four hundred sixty-two, that's a hundred a year. How many of them no longer are with the family? So I'm wondering why when we started off our point in time count nineteen, twenty-nineteen, if it was four thousand, and now we're in twenty-twenty-four, and it's four thousand five hundred, how effective was the Honu project and why are you continuing it? And then with the city budget is like billions of dollars going into the rail, how are we getting to help us with these four thousand four, five hundred individuals? It just blows my mind that I don't know where the money, why we have monies for schools and everything, but not to help get the four thousand five hundred in every senate district, not just my district.
Okay, thank you very much, go ahead.
That was about ten questions in there. So first off, Honu is just one program. We have programs all over the island doing different things. So you can't take a a number and divide it by one program and and say forty-five years, there's programs all over the island having successes. Of the four thousand-plus numbers that were out there, half of those are people are sheltered already, and the other half are unsheltered on the street. Um, I'm trying to think through some of your questions, ma'am. So also, you know, when when you, these programs, you ask for a number, generally speaking, half the people that go into shelters go back to the street. Half of the people that go into shelters move on to another level of their journey, right? Could be transitional housing, could be a longer-term care, like I said, a lot of people need healthcare, and then housing. So you you ask for that number, it's about that. Um, you know, we 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 have people coming into homeless that that weren't homeless, right? It could be economic reasons, could be kicked out of their house, so we're constantly dealing with with additions. It's interesting in the point in time count, and it's important to understand that the point in time count before, when we looked at the relationships, the numbers, it was we counted the same way. This past year, when they counted, they had a hundred more people counting than they had before. So if you have a hundred more people counting, you're gonna get more numbers, right? It doesn't matter, we have a lot, right? You can go on the beach, you have a lot. And so we try, like I said, as many creative things as we can do to get somebody to engage the system, and then many sets of resources um to deploy against those decisions. There's not really a relationship with in the budget between rail and and homelessness. A lot of the rail money uh comes from the federal government. Um, a lot of our homeless money comes from the federal government in a lot of ways, but I I don't bargain against rail uh to get our funding. The state is a great partner for us, they're, they provide the funding for Honu, and that's why we run the program, the the city runs it, but the state provides the funding for it. So you know, it's uh, you brought up a lot of complex issues, but hopefully that gives you some sense of the numbers and how we attack them. You know, we we took CARES Act money when that came out, and everybody was complaining that you're not spending, people aren't spending that, and I asked for ten million dollars of CARES Act money to um to be able to house people that wanted to be housed, because we have so many people that are resistant to the program. So I took a market that wanted to be housed, and we took that ten million dollars, and we housed, you know, we housed eight hundred and fifty people with that, three hundred and eight families, and ninety-two percent of those families are still housed. So you know, there's there's pockets of things you can do, and you take advantage of anything you can do to do that, to get somebody to be willing to engage the system, and then I gotta find resources to serve those decisions.
Chair, just one point that I wanted to make.
Go ahead.
You know, you made a point about all these wraparound services and all these things that the city is doing for our homeless population, our homeless families and individuals, but yet you don't have a final answer about the long-term plan with the Honu. I'm just wondering about that. That's what my main thing is. Do you have a database? Are you just keeping them going back out on the streets again? Like, how do you come to a sustainable, long-term plan when I'm just seeing these numbers and I don't see a long-term vision? About the billions of dollars for the rail, why don't you have a billion dollars for four thousand five hundred individuals? That's that's just what I'm saying. Because our beaches are being used by them, our sidewalks are being used by them, it's insane and it's inhumane. So when is it that those our elected officials are going to work together, seventeen senate districts, city council members, to come up with viable, long-term solutions instead of leaving them on our beaches and our sidewalks? That's all I'm saying.
Every time we house somebody, we've solutioned one person. Just because there's three people out there hasn't, doesn't mean that we haven't solutioned somebody. And in in terms of of of, and so you just keep trying to house people. Some people, housing's not the solution, medical treatment's the solution. It's a problem. I I get that it's a problem. Actually, we've we've done a lot, we've gotten a lot done. I wanted to make a point about the data. You can go on the Partners in Care, has a HMIS database, and the dashboards there can give you a lot of data on the movement of people, where they come, where they go, and and can give you some of the data that that you're requesting.
Very good. I I'm actually gonna move on uh to Board Member Augustine. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, I had a member of the community share an experience uh in relation to Honu and being at Nani Kai. The person was homeless right at seventy-six and chooses to be that way. Um, they talked about the foul smell of the person, the outburst of this person, and they still chose not to utilize your resource that was available right across the street. And so what are you doing to encourage members in the community who are like this homeless person, who you say here that um they need to pose no danger to self or others? How do you assess a person who is homeless to determine whether or not they are capable of being a person to utilize your service? And how do you build that trust to encourage them to wanna be in a tent that they're not familiar with, with these people who seem foreign to them?
Well, you know, we have a lot of experience with with assessment, and so, because we've been doing this for some time, and so we have a range of things that that can work for this program. Like any program, you have to have a range, because you know, if you don't have a a mental health person there doing mental health work, then you can't take someone in that needs mental health, they need they need to go to a different program. So this program has certain targets, it's trying to go to a community, kind of uh work with homeless that really wanna get into the system, and we try to work with them, and we can only work within a range. And you know, no matter how much you do, you're gonna have one story that didn't work, you're gonna have two stories that didn't work. It just is that way, we're we're people, we're humans, and and that's what we deal with.
Okay, very good. Uh, I think we're gonna go ahead and move over to community questions. Uh, go ahead, right right behind you. Go ahead, right behind you. I apologize, Mr. Cronk, you're gonna have to step aside, thank you. Please state your name for the minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful. Another protocol calls for me to talk to the board, but I know he's gonna hear what I have to say. This, I'm sorry, excuse my French, it's a bunch of crock. The reason why I say that? My daughter-in-law, her brother, needed help. He lost his job, he's a truck driver. He needed air, oxygen to drive, to do his function. Legally, federally, with the federal regulations, you're not allowed to have an air tank in your truck while you're driving. So he ended up losing his job. He ended up sitting in the middle of this beach park. I walked over to the HONU project, which was set up at that time, asked him, "Can you come out and help my brother-in-law?" "Oh, no, we don't can, we cannot, we cannot help him." "Okay, fine." Half an hour later, two sheriff's deputies came out from the tent. Now, this was 12 o'clock in the afternoon. They sent two sheriff's deputies to tell him he has to leave the park. I was sitting right there when they did that. I was so mad. Now, I contacted a representative who happens to be sitting in the corner back there. I wanna thank him very, very much for the help that he gave us. He gave us faster responses that day, faster than what they do. He was able to get my brother-in-law, that day, into the homeless shelter at Barbara's Point. And I wanna say, we got news today. He's been in there over one year, he's been trying to find a place. We got news today, they move into their new place Thursday. Thank you. But to me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I sound irate, it's because I am. Because to me, this project is useless. They don't do nothing. And I've talked to all the people that are living on that beach park, around the outbound boundaries on the outside. They said, "They go and try to get help." They didn't give them help. They refused to help them. And now they're talking about helping the homeless? They're not helping the homeless, they're making it worse. By not giving them the help that they need. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Community, please state your name for the record, thank you.
Tolseto, Westside. Anton Cronk, thank you for your speech, and that was very informative. But I see otherwise as well, too. Over at KL, we had the HONU program over there. You did not state that the HONU program for homelessness is voluntarily. We had the homeless HONU out there at KL Beach Park. For about four months, we still had homelessness out there. Was this a voluntarily programmed to enter there? And we have no resources, job resources on the west side. Everything is, 75% is on the outside of the 96792 employment. We have no resources. So with that said, there's a point in count of how much people that, who's in charge, the nonprofit organization such as Partners in Care. I got a letter from Laurie Teal in September 27, 2023, stating to me, "Allo, Austin, as I said before, our agency has no authority regarding the placement or facilitation of any care homes anywhere on Oahu. We never had and never will. I believe the care homes under the Department of Health also have no say in the placement of services or shelters on Oahu. If the agency has hard funding, we are obligated to review their programs and ensure that they comply with federal guidelines too hard. This does not extend to their placement in the community. Programs that we didn't see in a safe and sound, actively banning folks who are trespassing, other crimes on their records from certain areas, which may place burning in other regions. These are the city and state programs that we have no control over." And it goes on to say, so basically, Wai'ani is one of the three that the mayors and your initiative to look at to bring in this type of entities into our area, where we are overwhelmed during in our area. I don't support that, because look at the 80% of crime homicides in our area. Look at the recent shootings and deaths happening on the west side, and you folks wanna bring it on our side? And there's other areas, because Ha'ula, I spoke to their neighborhood boards, they're rejecting that, that idea of this Le'a Medical Respect Program. Wai'ua, I haven't reached out to them. And our side, I see a lot of, we have a lot of negative elements that we're up against. And that's not even having been taken care of. So you bringing upon this thing to the west side, 96792, it just adds the burden upon our law enforcement. Now, state law enforcement, state DOD, we don't know the long-term of having their support over here. So if you folks supporting the HONU in our area, A'ole, take it away Kai, take it on Haina.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. This will be our last question for HONU, and then we have one on virtual, so go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tiana Wilber. I do serve on the Wai'ani Coast Neighborhood Board, but I speak on my own behalf tonight. So my, I just, my first ask would be that collectively, if city can take back these questions and concerns and experiences and improve on their program if they continue serving HONU in our communities. So, couple of comments that was made earlier. My first question would be, when did walk-ins start? Because in 2023, I had three individuals I knew personally that I had referred to at Nani Kai. And one of them has gone to even the Ever Beach location when it was open. I was denied at both locations. So I went physically to the camp and sought out answers on how we can get these homeless individuals, especially being Kukuna, housed. And when I went, the answer was that they don't take walk-ins. So if that was true back in 2023, when did walk-ins start? Because per this presentation, it shows that walk-ins was available. And if it did start after the fact, then how are we enforcing these things today and making sure that we are available to everyone along the coast and not bringing people into this community because we can't refer the ones on our current beaches and streets? So that would be my question.
Okay, very good. You can go ahead and then respond, and then we'll move on to virtual. Oh?
My name is Tori Yuan. I am one of the staff there at the HONU programs. Also, I was one of the lead case managers there before I advanced to supervisor position. That particular case of the individual that needed assistance with the air tank and stuff, it was a collaborative assistance that took place to help that individual. So yes, HONU didn't take the full effect of assisting that individual when we were out there. However, we were able to connect not only with council member, but other programs like Kialaho West Oahu, who is the outreach team for this area, and was able to move them and not just leave them there. It did take a collaborative and team effort to get them the services that they needed. Walk-ins took place from the beginning of the program since 2019. If space is not available, it's hard for us to take walk-ins. However, the impact that we made on the community in Wai'ani alone was a lot. To get the individuals to come out and say, "Yes, I want the help," is difficult. But when they come for the help, it makes our jobs easier because we know how to help them, we know exactly what they want and where they wanna go. Our program is in place so that we can bridge that gap of not having vacancies in emergency shelters. People who need shelters right away, they come to us for services. We connect them with medical, food stamps, income, whatever it may be, to get them onto that road of sustainability. When applications come out for housing, we do the housing applications with them on HBHA, EH Housing. Or if they have the funding on their own to get their own housing, we look for assistance for them for first months rent at the pot sit, which is also programs that are funded through different resources. So in the community alone, I think it's just educating the community on what's in your community for assistance for you folks. Because you guys have a lot of assistance in the area, but you guys may not be aware of who's out here to help you guys. So there's Catholic charities in the area that assist. I just, well, it does our three events, and it does pretty much by six-week increments. And that allows us to touch the community where outreach teams are not reaching the individuals. So not everybody wants assistance. When they go out and get assistance or approached by community members to say, "Hey, do you want help? What's going on, like what's your situation?" It takes more than one opportunity or approach to get that individual to agree to want services. So it's that rapport that you have to build with that individual to actually help the person. And just alone being here in Nana'Kuli last time, we serviced a lot of people just because the numbers show that 145, but only 80 made it to shelter or relocation or other living situations. There's some that actually...
So, so I'm just gonna have you wrap it up really quickly, because we have two more questions online, and then we're gonna move on. So did you wanna give any final comments before?
Just because they leave not going to shelter, they still got connected with some type of service that they didn't have before coming in. So it's not a total negative, and it won't always be a positive for somebody. They have to want the help.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead to Ms. Perry. If you can unmute yourself, I noticed you had your hand up. Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So several comments. There's a transition shelter across Wai'ani High School, which was done by the city. I'm told they're all gone. We don't know where they are. So that project is vacant. That's one. The Wai'ani Neighborhood Community Center, there's an outflow of unsheltered people in that, in that center. The mayor and the governor have partnered together in the current situation of the shooting. This is where they can partner now to perhaps put the HONU at the small boat harbor. And if cannot, have the governor do an emergency proclamation. You know, helping one person, I think is a victory. People feel they have to give up their freedom. And some want help, some don't want help. But the governor, the offer what the governor is giving us is tiny, tiny homes. Former governor gave us transitional housing, affordable housing, temporary housing. I heard recently the affordable housing by the state was sold. This assessment that you do, I think part of it is for funding. There's millions of dollars out there addressing the homeless, and it's nationwide. So have the governor do a EP, take the HONU where the huge encampment is, and that is at the boat harbor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was a question online, how many communities have HONU hosted, and which communities were they? I did notice that was on your presentation. So if you're gonna allow us to release your presentation to the community, it's in the drive already. So just wanted to reference your question, Kapua. We'll be able to send you over their presentation with that information in there. Okay, we're gonna close up this section of the presentations. I do believe you need us to make a motion. Do we have to take a position on this? So at the board's pleasure, if we would like to take a position on supporting or opposing HONU, someone will need to make that motion.
With everyone notating positives and negatives, and the board from Wai'ani had made a suggestion, which is very valid, to probably, for example, in the walk-ins, if there is a lot more clarity, then again, like you said, it's complex, but we don't know complex. We understand what we see. So if it's spelt out, we're better equipped to get our loved ones in. And I housed my brother, took him off the street. But you have to be skilled. Fortunate, I have medical background. But again, it's educating him, talking to him, and letting him know our loved ones gotta go in willingly. Because once they cross the line, anything happen, you guys are liable. Okay, but the governor and the mayor can do a lot more to give more funding per person as they give per student in each school. So yes, there are funds. Do they wanna disclose it to us? No. So if you could come back with more details in the mental health, we're not just gonna refer them. Here is a document that says you have mental health. But if they have Tourette's, Yelling, yes, that's clarity. I can tell already the way they pace. If they have street drugs or prescribed drugs, I can identify that. So your staff should be equipped, skilled, and should understand that. The police only come in if you guys are having a challenge. So I think...
It's important to understand that this is a triage place where people come for just a bit of time to move them on in the system. It's not, it's not being posed as a solution to homelessness. It's just one activity in the process. But it does have an effect on your beach and the folks that are on the beach. It has a positive effect. In terms of admission, I think we summarized it there. You know, strong mental health, major medical, we can take minor medical. If a person's endangering others, we think they're gonna be a real problem to the others there in the community within the tent system, then we wouldn't allow them. It's a lot of common sense along that area, but I think you get the general sense. The real extreme cases are for other programs to treat.
So the walk-ins, I mean, if you're gonna add things after, we're still gonna have to know that. And if we're gonna take a stand, if that changes alone can occur, then yes, this is definitely...
If you came, if you came with somebody that was a walk-in and they didn't meet the criteria, we would work with you to refer you where that person's criteria would be a match.
Okay.
What's on here, verbally what you're saying, I wouldn't know that off the top unless I held my brother's hand or relative and got them there.
Okay, very good. Are we ready to make a motion? Are we still in discussion? We're ready to make a motion? I wanna move on. Okay, somebody will have to make that motion, I can't make it. Somebody will have to second it, then we can take a vote. Okay, does it look like we're ready to take a position tonight?
The reason that I'm concerned about the project is, I'm hearing that there's 10, 10 of your staff members, right? As part of the HONU project? 10 staff members, did I hear you say 10?
Seventeen.
Oh, 17, okay. Instead of like housing, going up and just locating yourself in one place, why aren't you, why isn't the strategy to go and do a certain area and go to each homeless encampment? Talk to them, you know, like during the day, during an eight-hour period, go to each of them and talk to them so that you can discern and have, start a database of these people need mental health, and then circle back. You know, you have your staff that is the mental health, you have your staff that have this other resource. So that we, and this, the sheltering, I don't understand that you're sitting in one place and only servicing 50 people for 120 days is a viable solution. When you have 17 members that can go across our entire island and cover 4,500. So at this point, I guess I'll make a motion not to support HONU project for our neighborhood board to not support HONU project, because I don't see that using these resources is a long-term viable solution. I just don't. Because you can use the same 17 staff to go, "Okay, let's start Wai'ani Coast, we're gonna be here for the next three months, because you got 17 people, and you're gonna go to each encampment." At the end of the quarter, you can come to us and you go, "I talked to all 1,000 people in 96792, and this much people want shelter, this much people need mental health, but you don't come back with us with that kind of a long-term vision. It's just temporary, temporary, temporary." So I make a motion not to support the HONU project? Is that what, yep?
Okay, there has been a motion made to not support the HONU project. Do I have a second? I need a second. Oh. Oh, okay.
I second.
All right, very good. All right, Jeffrey's gonna go ahead and do a roll call.
So I'll do a roll call vote for the board members that I do have present. Again, if you vote "aye" in this case, you are voting to not support the HONU project. If you say "nay," you are showing that you do have support for the HONU project. And if you abstain, of course, you just abstain. So I'm gonna go down. There's still, there is still time for discussion if necessary, since the motion's been made.
For clarity on this vote, I would like to entertain that suggestion was made to put the HONU project at the boat harbor. And that could be something that is then brought up with the Wai'ani Neighborhood Board if it is a solution there. But as of Nana'Kuli Ma'ili, I feel that the community has spoken and voiced their concerns about the validity of this project, and also that this project, if it is needed, it's needed elsewhere, more so than within the Nana'Kuli Ma'ili district. So that's what our vote will be supporting in terms of not supporting the HONU project here. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm actually going to move forward so that we can take the vote. I don't want to start discussing, I do not wanna start discussing where this HONU should go, other than where you folks have suggested it gonna go. So I'm gonna give Jeffrey the microphone. He's gonna go ahead and take a roll call. So I'm gonna give Jeffrey the microphone. He's gonna go ahead and take a roll call. And the vote is to not support the Honu. Is that correct? Okay.
Again, so I'm gonna go down.
I'm so sorry. I had my hand raised.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I saw that. We were already in our motion, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanna note, that's an improper motion. You can't make a motion to not support something. Someone would just have to say, I make a motion to support, and everybody say no. So, sorry, that's Robert's rules. FYI.
You know, I'm so sorry. I missed that.
Thank you for clarifying that, Naomi. Yes, my apologies as well. So with that change in the motion, the motion is to...
Okay, point of order. So you would have to rescind that motion even though it's out of order. So just rescind it altogether. Your motion doesn't have to be an affirmative. Your vote can be in the opposite of the affirmative. So I don't understand. Sunshine Law doesn't require you to make an affirmative statement. It could be an opposing statement, and then you vote that way. Go across and look at every board that does these things.
That is very...
So, but if she doesn't wanna vote unless it says for, I'll change it so that it's in the opposite. I'm the motion maker. I changed the motion so that it says, but I don't support, I say to support our board member Naomi, Hano Hano, wants it in the affirmative. I say our board, I make a motion to support. Actually, no, I pull out my motion. If Naomi wants to make that motion, she can make that motion. I rescind my motion.
Board member Naomi Hano Hano, would you like to make the motion?
No.
Okay. You know, I'm so sorry. We're just gonna have to move on from this. We're not gonna be able to make a motion tonight. I would like to welcome you to attend our committee meeting. If you would like to put that on the agenda, we can have further discussion. At this time, we're not gonna make a motion. Mr. Kraki, thank you so much. Your team and your team for...
Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Chair. The board can, the board can move forward in a motion to say that they oppose the project to move forward. And so to move forward and not have the opportunity to board members to make an entertainment motion, I think that is, that is not proper to move forward, Madam Chair. I think every board member has entitlement to make a motion with a second and to say that they don't or either support that project moving forward. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have a comment. I did ask if there could be some detail, and that's all I asked before we totally... I know it's, so it's an opposing, so we will definitely have to consider what you said. So Naomi, since she's not gonna make the motion, and she doesn't understand Sunshine Law and parliamentary rule, I'll go back and make my motion not to support this, the Honu project.
I would like to, I would like to step in, please. Again, I voiced this before. This is, I understand there are things that can come up, but this is not a place to banter others. Yes, there was a motion that was made. Her reference was to Robert's rules, not Sunshine Law, which we also abide by as neighborhood board. So she is correct in the matter that a motion cannot be made in opposition. The correct way for a motion to be made is a motion to support this project. If someone was to vote nay, then that means they showed they're not supporting. But the wording of a motion cannot be to not support something. So for the motion on the floor, if the motion is to be made, it has to be to, I move, I make a motion to support the Honu project. And if board members do vote nay, they shall, they are voicing that they do not support the project.
I'd like to make a point of clarification. Since the NA is not in align with what board members understand, and we do have a parliamentary, our sergeant-at-arms, and that's, so I am going to say that we defer this until next month. And then we discuss it in next month's meeting, once we get the answers from the NCO. Mahalo.
Okay, great. We're gonna defer this to next month. We are moving on. Mr. Kraki, thank you for, you and your team for being here. Let's go ahead and move on. We're gonna go back to presentations, a State of Hawaii Kahale Initiative presented by Office of Homelessness and Housing Solutions Director John Mizuno. Tonight's agenda is to discuss State of Hawaii Kahale Initiative. As your board chair, I did advocate for a presentation to be made tonight by the Office of Homeless and Housing Solutions Director, John Mizuno. I repeat, the agenda is to discuss State of Hawaii Kahale Initiative. Mr. Mizuno is not present to give his presentation on the State Kahale's initiative. However, that does not negate the fact that our numerous board and community members have expressed their urgent concerns over the past year and more frequently within the past two months to discuss State Kahale initiatives on DHHL lands and other state lands and privately owned lands by nonprofits and others. Therefore, at this time, I'm going to allow for board and community members to express your concerns and your questions about our State Kahale initiatives. First, I'm gonna go to board members, and then I will go to community. So board members, questions, concerns with regards to the Kahale, Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I attended the Waianae Neighborhood Board meeting two weeks ago. And Mr. John Mizuno told the Waianae Neighborhood Board that he has plans to build six hundred, six zero zero Kahale units, tiny homes with communal bathrooms and kitchens along the Waianae Coast, which is our Senate District 22. As a board member, listening to the voices of Nana Kuli Ma'ili residents, I'm taking a stance against having six hundred Kahale units being built in our Senate District 22 from Kahete Point to Ka'eno Point. Most especially, I'm against Kahale being built on DHHL lands. If anyone is going to live on DHHL lands, it should be a native Hawaiian with a homestead lease for ninety-nine years, not a Kahale communal project for all state residents. Our previous senator, Senator Ma'ili Shimabukura, was also against the continued abuse and disparity of these facilities being concentrated mostly in our Senate District 22 instead of being equally dispersed within all seventeen Senate districts on Oahu. In 2023, during the Thirty Second Legislature, Senator Ma'ili Shimabukura introduced Senate Resolution 30. In June 2023, our Neighborhood Board under Chair Pari Kahanamakutiruya voted unanimously in support of SR 30. In conclusion, Senate Resolution 30, SD 1, was passed by the Senate in 2023. Senate Resolution 30 urged the state and city and county of Honolulu to recognize and address the inequitable locating of mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes across the island of Oahu, particularly the prevalence of these facilities and homes along the Waianae Coast. Please take note that Kahale are homeless shelters since they have communal bathrooms and communal kitchens. Our public housing and affordable rentals don't have communal bathrooms and kitchens. Senate Resolution 30 states, whereas a large number of mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes along Oahu's Waianae Coast has caused individuals struggling with mental health issues and substance use programs to be referred to services along the Waianae Coast from other areas of Oahu. And whereas due to these factors, residents living along the Waianae Coast have urged the government to increase access to mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes more evenly across the state. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate of the Thirty Second Legislature of the State of Hawaii, Regular Session 2023, that the state and city county of Honolulu are urged to recognize and address the inequitable locating of mental health facilities, clean and sober homes, homeless shelters, and other supportive living homes across the island of Oahu, particularly the prevalence of these facilities and homes along the Waianae Coast. And be it further resolved that partners in care, Oahu is requested to consult with stakeholders on issues such as, and she listed six.
Okay.
Due to time, if there is time at the end, I would like to share with the chair, if there's more time, that Mr. Mizuno is the chairman of the twenty-seven-member advisory committee. And my concern is that he has never had a mandated meeting with this committee. And how is he coming up with these projects, especially the six hundred? So I'll go more into that later. And so, mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Myers. Board members, any other questions? Board Member Hano Hano online, if you have a question, please raise your hand. Okay, so now we're gonna move over to community. So please go ahead, line up to the microphone. Thank you so much. And for everybody that's here to weigh in on this presentation, we appreciate you taking the drive and to be here and to give your comments. Please go ahead.
Mahalo, chairperson and board members and my community. I am Auntie Blanch. I am from Waanau. I am the CEO and the founder of Hu'uma'ia'aaina. I am standing in front of you to tell you guys about the homeless shelters. The homeless shelter that we have, we have seventy-five people, we have twenty-six children, we have fifteen seniors that... The senior that we have, the oldest, is ninety-two years old. The youngest of the senior is fifty-five years old. And we have sickly people who has cancer, stage four cancer. We have hospice. We take care of the people in Waanau. What in my homeless shelter, it's a community bathroom, showers and everything. But we have leaders that controls everything that goes in our property. And I think, you know, let me tell you the beginning of my story. I am not a smart person. I wasn't smart enough. But I had to ask the Lord to teach me what is right from wrong. And what I did, once I accepted God in my life, everything started to open up and started to show me the way, how homeless should be taken care of. What he taught me was to love your people, never to hate your people, always be there for your people, and be one big ohana. And I've been taking care of many, many people. I have been getting in people. I've been taking them out to transition. And like Honu, I had a couple of them, but we transitioned them out to other places. If you're talking about homeless of all other homeless, I've been there. I've done that. I walk with it. I've been all over, helping. And this is why I stand in front of you guys today. I stand right on the side of Josh Green and John Mizuno on this situation, on this kind of program, especially Kahalees. We're here just to help each and every different places like Waianae, Nana Kuli, Ma'ili. We're not here to take over you folks. We are here to help you folks. We want you guys to learn what the Hawaiians did. They took care of the people. My place, where I have, I have ninety-eight point nine percent Hawaiians on my facility. This is what you guys need to come. If you wanna see what I do and how I present myself to the people of Hawaii, come to my place and see how I do the talk and the walk. Because if you're gonna sit here and not realizing how important our people out there on the street that needs help, if you're not gonna do it, who's gonna do it? There's nobody. If you come to Waanau, I'll show you who I do. I help every single one of them. But when it comes to drugs, you cannot help because that's the facility that people been getting from all over. All over the island have drug problem, but you can solve it? No. Let me tell you something about my facility. How I solve that problem? I don't go to the doctors. I don't go to it. I make them go in the garden. And I make them take this flower, put it in the garden. And when their flower becomes, when it grows, it shows the love and the beauty of them. And they, they forget about their drugs. They wants to be better. They wanna be greater. So this is what we do. The Lord has given me all of this, and he showed me the way. This is why I would not sit down and listen to any of you guys because you don't know how to walk the talk and do the work. Because why? We have our people out there on the street. We need to go out there and help them. This is why we are trying to help each and every one of you folks. And we trying to be there. We're not gonna run you, your Nana Kuli. We're not gonna run you Waanae or Ma'ili. We are here to help, to bring homeless shelters for our people. I don't want our people to be out there. How many years, twenty-two, twenty-five years are people been on the street? Please, give us a chance to do the work for you folks. Let us help you folks. Let us do the work, especially the state and the city. This is why I stand today for the city and the state. Because why? We are want to ask you folks, your community, let us help you folks. Is that what you guys want? You guys want you guys homeless people to come out on the beach? You guys want back, you guys beautification of your guys beach? That's what I wanna see. I wanna see the beauty of the beach back again. If we can do that, if we can help our people, I'd be happy. And I wanna be there to help you folks, how we do the help of our people. I thank you very much. May God bless all of you. And thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And I did just wanna mention that we were a little slow on keeping the time, so that was a little over two minutes. No, that was the Lord that gave you that extra time. But I do just wanna mention that this is a very sensitive issue, and I do wanna bring this attention to our community members that are here. This is the last thing that I want dividing our community. And I understand that we have very passionate stances on both sides of this issue. And I want us to be very mindful that when we are sharing our points and we are making our comments, to just be mindful that we're not blaming each other. Please make your point. I'm guilty of being passionate and misspeaking on emotional issues when I feel very strongly about something. But I do wanna make sure that I settle the room a little bit, that we're here to hear everybody. But I wanna make sure that when we are sharing our concerns, that we come just with a collaborative effort and just to make sure that we are able to hear everyone's thrill, okay? Go ahead.
Real quick, is anybody in the audience connected on their phone or device? Would that be able to be turned down? It's causing an echo for the online audience in some type of fashion. Thank you.
Okay, okay, very good. But our timekeeper is keeping time. So I do wanna ask that you respect when the timer goes off to allow everybody the opportunity to share. Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. My name is Rocky Nioli, long-time resident of Waianae and Neighborhood Board for Nana Kuli. Thank you. I belong to the Kupuna Council, Waanae Kupuna Council. So we're here in support of all the Kahalees that we need to support on this coast. So we're, can one of my group stand, please? All the group from the Kupuna Council, please stand. Okay, these are the people here that goes out to all these encampments here Waianae and answer the questions for the people that are staying in, on the beaches. These are the ones that go out and do the work. So, you know, with your help, with the Waanae Neighborhood Board's help, we can work together, you know, and make things happen in our community. Like Blanch said, twenty-five years, maybe more homelessness here on the Waanae Coast, and it's only getting worse. It's only getting worse. There's more, more people coming out here. What Blanch said, she just hit it right on the note. She hit it right on the note. We need to follow her lead to help our people. And with aloha, that's how we work. Kupuna Council, with aloha and with Kia Kua. So we, you know, we're doing our part. And if, if we are doing something wrong, okay, you think it's wrong for us to do it the wrong way, come to us, let us know. We meet every Thursday, Puka Ebe. If we're not over there by the bathroom under the banyan tree, we're over there by the hell, cleaning up the hell. That's our kulianna too, by cleaning the hell. So if you need anything, let us know, you know? And there's a lot of pickering going around that we're not doing things right. But we try to do things the right way for our people to get off the beach. You know, if we can get one family off of the beach before the holidays, oh man, that's a, that's a good feeling right there, knowing that this family would have a roof over their head and enjoying one good meal. So I thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Please go ahead to the microphone and state your name, please.
Hello, Michael Ko, Madam Chair, and our board members. Mahalo for reminding us about our aloha spirit that we should be sharing with one another. We all are passionate about our ohana and those who are out, and are outside of their homes. But also realizing that we have kulianna to our present and our past. And so I'm standing here just to voice my concern. And so I'm standing here just to voice my concern. I work with homeless and so I am not against them. Every month I help with food distribution. I help with organizations that help those who are in need. So I am not against them. What I cannot understand is why we're using Hawaiian homelands. And so like our auntie was saying earlier, I'm not very educated either in the law. But as my friends were sharing with me certain articles, I tried to educate myself. So Act nineteen-twenty, yeah, with Prince Kohio, who wanted to provide affordable homes for the Hawaiian people. DHHL, if you read online, they are supposed to be working with the beneficiaries for the betterment of our four thousand people who are on the list. The emergency proclamation to help the homeless. Let's not use that to say we have to put Kahale on Hawaiian homelands, yeah? And then the Kahale, I get really concerned when we use Hawaiian terms and it's honu, not honu. Yeah, Hawaiian terms and not know what that means because it's coming from lips and not from heart. So we need to educate ourselves more about the language and the culture. What I'm worried about is, and in one of our meetings that we had with Ms. Tector, is that the state, if they want to do something, they will designate the land, whether it's Hawaiian homes or not, as their land. And there goes the Hawaiian people again, losing their land. So we need to educate ourselves and support, not be in support of Kahale on Hawaiian homelands. Mahalo.
Very good. Thank you very much. Please go ahead to the microphone.
Aloha, my name is Blossom Myers and I'm born and raised here on Puah Avenue, which is right up the road. And I'm, I just concerned about the Kahale that is, you know, being spread out here on the west coast. But like Jermaine mentioned, that there's six hundred that they wanted to build. And it's really true that they should spread it out to seventeen districts, not only on this side. And I'm, for me, I'm opposed of this Kahale being on Hawaiian homestead because I'm from Puah Avenue. And to me, I'm born and raised here, graduate of Nana'kuli High and Intermediate, and I oppose to Kahale being built in the Hawaiian homestead because it should be a priority or prioritize for DHHL, homestead waitlist.
Yeah?
Because, you know, there's a lot of people on the waitlist and it should go to the people on the waitlist. And there's a lot of vacant lots all over Waianae and Nana'kuli. And it should go to homesteaders, waitlists. Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Go ahead, up to the microphone, state your name for the minute, please.
Mike Rodriguez, again. I want to point out that in this discussion, Hawaiian homestead has been put out in front to show separation. And I want to point that two people back there, the military, were Lualulele. We have asked for permission to access cultural sites. And when we went up there with Jill Tokudo, we were greeted with long guns. And they said we need to protect Navy interests. The thing is, up there, they have buildings where people lived before that has been abandoned. Why can't they give up some of that land that was stolen? So that we can work on a Kahale that makes sense in a community for benefit of all, without taking anything away from the Hawaiians? I do not support Kahale on Hawaiian homelands, other than getting it returned from the state, county, or federal government.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please go ahead, up to the microphone, please. Who's next?
Mahalo, Tiana Wilber, speaking on my own behalf. And so I just wanted to bring some clarification as far as how discussions started and how the governor's office was invited to Neighborhood Board. So the discussion did start at Kupuna Council and it was in the beginning of a discussion from community. So community-based discussion. And they were coming to community to ask community what it is that we need. Not what we want or what we want to see, it's what we need. What do we need in our community? And per our understanding, that was advised to them by other outreach programs in our own community, residents from our community. They said, do not repeat history and go into Waianae and tell them what they need. You go to the community and you ask them what it is that they need. So that's why the door was open. Our chair had invited them to come to our Neighborhood Board to start that discussion. And that's what, we're the direction that we hope to continue, is that it's coming from the community. So this is something that I want to just give to our community, a different perspective, is that I've never, in all of my time at growing up, hearing about homelessness and housing and things like that, never heard city and state coming together and asking us, the community, what it is that we need. So I think we should take advantage of the fact that they're awarding, affording us this opportunity instead of just coming in and doing what they did like Kaiulu or Kaiulu, which was supposed to be temporary. So another suggestion that I also, that was brought up in our meeting was that Kahale. So the term Kahale, I think, should be dismissed as far as us providing temporary shelters because Kahale isn't temporary. Kahale is something more permanent because it's more of a village mentality, a village style of living. So I don't think Kahale is appropriate name for us housing our homeless now or getting the help that we need now. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Please go up to the microphone.
Aloha, my name is Jolynn. Anyway, just wanted to give a shout out to Auntie Blanch for all the stuff she's doing in Waikiki. I think that's amazing. I totally think that's amazing. However, every community, especially Hawaiian community, have different issues. No matter where you come from, every Hawaiian has a different community issues. And I hear what you guys are saying, but our homeless today, they young. They do not want to live in any homes. We've been on some of the, I helped Tupulat do beach cleanup. There's a lot of homeless that do not want to live in homes. My concern is that if we build six hundred units, is it going to be filled with our, our community? I, I, I don't think so. And it's not about, it's not about not supporting it. I, I, the thing about it is trust. We don't trust the government. We haven't in a long time. We, Waianae right now carry all the environmental issues. I'm telling you, we get all the dumps. We get all the illegal dumping. We get all the sewer plants. Not forget, people, there's a lot of things that people are just dumping. So I don't want this to be another one because we have other places right now that is not filled with our own people. So go and see, find out if there are Kupuna. I like what Johnny Bay Perry said, build one Kupuna center up in Makaha Valley. Go and take our Kupuna. That's where my heart is at. But right now, we get plenty of young guys. They're willing to, they able can work. They don't want to. They're out of the play horseshoe on the beach, party all day. And you know what? People like us who work hard, we can't, I, I, I drive that every day, every day. And it's not fair for people who work hard. So we believe, we believe these shelters, listen. We get plenty of mental health issues. And I'm telling you, housing these guys is not the solution. We need programs, honestly, programs. And you're gonna put somebody with mental health issues in one small Kahale, guess what? They go crazy. That's not one place for them. This is not one solution for us. We need to come up with better things, just like everybody's saying. They cannot come into our community. We've been hearing this forever. Come into our community, even come in our schools at one time, came in, tell us what, what, what we wanted. The community doesn't kick back. So it took them a long time to come in our community. I'm telling you. So now we pushing this, people, we got to pay attention. We need to pay attention and participate. I just can't help it anymore because people are just not showing up and participate. Thank you, guys. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Auntie Z with the Waianae Moku Kupuna Council. I appreciate what Auntie Blanch has done and her good example is what I'm looking at. Her good example is she's making effort, at least helping the people. I was working full-time at the State Department when I came homeless because I helped a Kupuna who was being beaten up. And I was living in Mili at the time. So I went to IHS, did all the things and was able to get a place right away. I was one of the lucky ones. Everybody else was waiting seven years to get into Jack Hall. The Kahalae's are good for any and all people that need it right now. I know we get plenty of pili kia with the youth. We need to really pull it for the youth right now. Something's gotta happen with why the guns are coming in and why the, when I saw the house angels in this area about a year and a half ago, I knew something wrong was gonna happen and sure enough, look at it now, really bad. So we need to try our best to find out what the pili kia is in the home, what the pili kia is in the community. But the Kahale's that Auntie Blanch is doing is a really good example. Why throw it away? Utilize it. Mahalo, kia kua.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Aloha, Palais Sauvageiro. I want to tell you what the community needs. We need all our government officials. We need the governor, we need the mayor to hold a town hall meeting. And not just control, you know, the town hall meeting. We need them to come out at nine, six, seven, nine, two. Whether it's gonna take a few days, whether you're gonna hold a town hall in Nana'kuli and hold another one in Waianae. You folks are our government. You need to hear the voice of the community, not send your soldier, come yourself. That's what we need. We need to hear things from the horse's mouth, not their behind. That's what we need.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, up to the microphone, please state your name for the minutes.
My name is Jo-Wen and I'm a resident of Auntie Blanch at Huimahia'aaina. I hear so much about people complaining about the homeless, the homeless, the homeless, yeah? These people are here. You guys got the support of the governor, you guys got the support of the mayor, and you guys got the support of John Mizuno there. The only reason why Governor Josh Green picked Auntie Blanch's patent, because she had made a patent, is because her shelter is the only one that worked among this whole island. She is even going on the outside island and opening up Kahalae's. I live in a Kahale and it's an eight-by-eight. You have people that want to come in the, you know, come into the shelter. You have people that don't want. Give the shelter to the people that don't want, the Kupunas. I'm sixty-six years old and I live there. And give them a chance. You guys got everybody to support this, you know? They know what they need to do. They know where, what, where to go look for the land, you know? They know what to do. Give them a chance. If you guys don't give them a chance, don't grumble about the homeless. From Waianae to Mili, don't grumble because they're here to help you folks. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Aloha, my name is Eric Ford. Aloha, Chair. I'm here as a private citizen for Auntie Blanch. I work with John Mizuno, Office of the Governor. We wanted to be here tonight, but we were advised not to be here because we have an official complaint with the commission. The commission's gonna let us know with the board over here. There's a lot of misgivings of what's being said over here. We went to Waianae. We're coming to listen to you. That's the main, we're gonna do it the Waianae way and we're gonna do it the Nana'kuli way. We're not gonna come over here and just start blasting. And I advise John that this is the correct way to do. And in downtown, it's roughly thirty to thirty-five percent Hawaiian. Out here, it's fifty to sixty. So this is a Hawaiian problem. I'm native Hawaiian. I'm on the team. And we just want to say, we will be here for the next one, once it's resolved. And we will come with a presentation and we're gonna leave it up to you. And that's all I wanted to say. I'm just a public citizen back in Auntie Blanch. Mahalo. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight. Go ahead.
Hi, aloha. I'm Lina Suzuki and I'm also with the Waianae Moku Kupuna Council. And there's a couple of things I wanted to, to just address. So one of them is Kahale on DHHL land. So I don't think there was anything said on our side about any homes being built on DHHL land. And I heard Pastor Allen clear that up for Puah Ave as well. The thing I wanted to address about that is, you see Auntie Lovey over here in the corner? Auntie Lovey is the person that we put into Ulukue Kukui. She's also the person that they were put back at sewers, that went into the emergency room, that now live with Auntie Blanch in Waikiki. So and we over here saying, oh, we've got to make sure we housing Waianae. Waikiki is housing our own. And so for us to say things like that, that's not aloha and that's not this community. The other thing I wanted to address is to Hawaiian home leases that's speaking for waitlisters. So if you get one leased land and you're living at your Hawaiian homes, go take care of your Hawaiian homes. Go take care of your homestead. Go let the department know what you need for your homestead. But when they're trying to build things for people like Auntie Lovey, who is seventy percent Hawaiian, that not gonna ever afford one crack of jack house, but maybe one Kahale because she already living in that is healing her, might not be a bad idea. But we're gonna try to talk to Auntie Lovey instead of listening to people who already live in homes. The other thing I wanted to address was community concerns that came here and was allowed to be said here about the Kupuna Council. And that we're going around doing things and not coming to the Neighborhood Board. If there are things that we needed to come to Neighborhood Board, we would come. But we engage as much as we can, in ability that we can, like Uncle Rocky said, to help our people. That's all we doing. And if we doing anything wrong, come sit with us. Come tell us what we doing. Come in Kapo aloha, stay in Kapo aloha. No swear, respect the speaker. That's all we ask, yeah? So we invite you guys to come Kupuna Council every second and fourth Thursday to be engaged with Kupunas from Waianae and Nana'kuli and Mili. Aloha.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, go right ahead.
No, not yet. The doves have nests, the fox have holes, but the son of man has no place to lay his head. Yes? Manuela boy, my dear boy, no more holler, no more five cents, no more house. Go Allah Park, here, boy. Now remember, at one time, Allah Park had a housing. Who was that? Fosse? Yes. My name is Leona Kalima. Google me. I am ashamed of you refusing help. Ah, holy! How dare you? What's your plan? Because I know I've been promised by your council person over here for help one time. You remember this face at a CNHA conference? You never came out for help me, Tedup, okay? So I got you. You.
Hold, hold on one second, Auntie. Auntie, ho, hold on, please. If, if I can just have you address your comments to us, please.
No, okay. Because you guys better listen to this. The lease coming up from Makua and Kahuku.
Address your, your question, we're not here to address.
They need to get out of stolen land. How, aloha?
Thank you, thank you. So we're gonna take one more. Okay, go ahead. Mr. Lanford, go ahead and then Auntie Blanch, you're welcome to come back after. We're gonna move on to online questions after. I see your hands up. Please bear with us. We'll get to you in a second. Go ahead.
Thank you, boy. Thank you, community. I, I had already voiced my concern about this project. And back in two thousand and eight, as we first sat and tried to meet about the oncoming homeless situations, there were certain plans that was put to use at that time that we thought was going to, I guess, monitor our growth. Unfortunately, here it is fourteen, fifteen years later and I'm still on a board and I'm still trying to see why, why is it growing? Why is it so abundant? And unfortunately, why in Waianae? I born and raised in Waianae. I was homeless when I was twelve years old until I was twenty. So I understand the homeless situation. I understand we're now begging for food. I understand going without food for five, six nights in a row. So, you know, I look at the guys at the beach. I, I, I walk and I talk to some of them that I know or I don't know and I think I know. And some of them, they, they, they want to be there, you know? But I feel concerned because...
But I feel concerned because there's guys like us, us old buzzards that's struggling to pay our rent. We struggling to pay our electricity, we struggling. And here, we hear about these things that's happening and we upset. We get really upset. There's a group of old buzzards of us at meet at Pukai Bay. We sit down, we're all retirees, we all joke, we all point finger, we all say the bad things, but, you know, we don't come to the meetings, you know? There's fifteen of us, you know, and we all hang out. Guys who know, you know, you know, you know who we are, but we don't come to this kind of stuff and we just, Waimea style, do what you're gonna do, as long as you don't cross me. When you cross me, then look out, right? But it's not working. In the old days, there was a way that nobody can pack one gun in Waimea without somebody knowing and coming to your house or calling up your relative, you know, take that thing away. Nowadays, it's a wild, wild west. Everybody is a gangster, whether they get big chain, whether they packing what I am. The gangsters know who the gangsters are. But all of these programs they're talking about tomorrow night, you're still not gonna get the gangsters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Auntie Blanch, I'm gonna allow you the opportunity, then we're gonna move on to online, go ahead.
I, I have one more thing to say, you guys are talking about Hawaiian homes. Let me tell you something, before I started to take care of my people, I had to learn this. I had to go to Hawaiian homes and I had to ask them question. Can I put my people on the top of the cliff above my place in Waimeanalo? If I could put at least fifty people on the top? Guess what was the answer? The answer was each and every one of the homeless have to be fifty percent Hawaiian. You cannot put anybody below a fifty percent Hawaiian. I said, thank you very much. Let me tell you something, I really didn't wanna take the Hawaiian homes because we have twenty thousand people on the waiting list. And that's why my heart went out to our Hawaiian people, because they the one that needs to be on the homestead. And that's why I walked away and I found a deal in our land. And that's where I sit today on a twenty, um, fourteen acres, a fourteen point five acres. And that's where I sitting today. And if you guys wanna see what I do and how I do it, I'd be happy to be, I mean, I'd be happy to show you folks how wonderful the place is. And you know, I have my people here, can you stand up, please? Oh, you did? This is my people. This is all the ones that came from our village. I mean, well, our Huimaheina Waimeanalo. Thank you very much, board. Mahalo for so much.
Thank you very much and uh, thank you very much for taking the drive out. Sure, go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Real quickly, since I have you from Waimeanalo here. I go to all of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs meetings from twenty seventeen. Leona knows, she's been there. Oha has been trying to get one building, one high rise in Kakaako Makai. I go to HCDAs meetings to try to get advocate for Hawaiians to have live play and work in downtown Honolulu with a home in Kakaako. I don't see any of you guys on my left and my right when I'm trying to advocate for us Hawaiians. And HCDAs a state agency. Why doesn't the state allow for us, but yet Kakaako Maoka get fifty buildings that blocking our mountain view? But we like one building on the ocean side on our ten parcels of land, but no more. Seven parcels. When we, when I advocate for native Hawaiians, I hope other native Hawaiians come to get those resources, but I don't see anybody, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that point.
Okay, let me go ahead and move on.
To help other Hawaiians. I wanna address that.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on to online community, so uh, let me go ahead. Uh, I did notice the hands being raised in order, so I'm gonna call you in order. Uh, first Johnny May, Perry, Patty, Kahana Moku, uh, Po'okele, you're next. And I, and then I believe Kapua and then uh, Jax Gay. So um, go ahead, Ms. Perry.
Uh, thank you, Chair. When John Mizuno came to the Waimea Coast Neighborhood Board, August sixth, I'm also a board member. Um, he said, no Kahali on the DHL land. Sam Moku for the city said they were gonna build Kahalis on the east of Honolulu. So my question, are they gonna go island wide to other neighborhood boards selling the pitch of Kahali? The, the homeless could, you can, you can um, have a group home by getting PPP permit and Department of Health permit to, to take care of the unsheltered. You can also be a guardian and item for each individual, which you will be responsible to make the decision for them. That, that's alternatives, okay? Waimeanalo Beach had choked homeless people for years and years, okay? So I believe the, the people that who is selling the pitch of Kahali is using this community. And these community members think, oh, they're doing a fabulous thing. I'm sorry, people, they're using you. Um, John Mizuno, when he was representative, he sent his homeless people here, people um, to the farm. So is this Kahali really for the homeless or for the farmers and having the homeless farm the land? Now to live in a Kahali that is so small, you cannot hoard things and you have to pick up yourself immediately. Otherwise you will suffocate in that, in that small shelter. Okay, it's not like we don't have heart for our people, but why isn't our kuliana? They have family, where are they? Where are they? Okay, so no say that we don't have heart or whatever. Fine and dandy, God bless you, your project is working, God bless you. But I know for a fact Waimeanalo have plenty of homeless. And where were you? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Kahana Moku, if you could.
Thank you.
Thank you?
Yes. Thank you, can you hear me? Wow, what a discussion. You know, first of all, I wanted to thank the Chair for having this bold of subject item on the agenda. And you know, it's a shame that um, uh, Mr. Mizuno denied actually coming to um, face this meeting, you know? And so um, you did try Samantha, I give you kudos for bringing this to your board, to the Nanakuli community. Now let me start from the beginning. In June, at the Department of Hawaiian Homestead meeting, commission meeting, Chair Watson clearly stated that Kahali was going to be built on Pua Avenue Gang, DHL land. There's a tape, there's a meeting we attended, we were just so surprised to hear that. Secondly, he came to June's neighborhood board meeting, which is in Nanakuli, and also made that same statement. So this is the uproar of the Kahali being on DHL and it's a trust land. It is a trust land, it's not a state land, it's a trust. And so please clearly understand that there is over thirty thousand people on the waitlist now. I've heard different numbers, but the accurate number is thirty thousand plus. And so knowing DHL trust land, it has to go to waitlisters. Ms. Kalima should know that very well, Kalima versus DHL, where they denied Hawaiians to get into homestead lands. So clearly, I am not supporting any Kahali and hopefully stating that the governor and the chair should make that bold statement that it should not be proposed on any DHL trust land. Um, before moving forward on any kind of land or projects on DHL, there is a mandate of a beneficiary consultation. And so that's truly important, important on the Hawaiian Homestead Act of nineteen twenty. I also wanted to thank Ms. Myers, Board Member Myers, you're always so bold to speak up and to bring up the Senate bill. You were correct, you did your homework, it was a Senate bill that this board passed. And, and your advocacy with Oha on, on the Kakaako trust land for native Hawaiians. And so these are very important, uh, important points that you brought up. Where is everyone who wants to help the native Hawaiians? One, at Oha meetings, two, at DHL commission hearings? So I wanted just to bring that all up. I'm not, uh, not supporting in Kahali. If Kahali wants to have Kahali in Waimea and Makaha, then so be it. Have it built and take the people off of the first priority is a boat harbor. Clear off the boat harbor and see if they would be able to go into the Kahali. So I just wanted to thank everybody, it was a deep discussion. I don't think Nanakuli is versus, we're not, uh, we're not, uh, what you call against Kahali. Um, Jolene, Balanti, Nanakuli, thank you so much, you made such a great, you know, advertisement of what's going on in our Aho Pua Ha. But uh, we just wanted to make for sure, um, Chair, um, the court that Kahali should not be proposed on DHL land. And again, I thank the Chair for your boldness. I thank the Chair for your um, reaching out to the homeless advocate coordinators. Um, it's too bad they're here and they're taking things out of hand. We need to take politics out of this full discussion. So mahalo for this opportunity. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kahana Moku. Okay, uh, next up is Po'okele, then we're going to go to Jax Gay and then uh, Kapua. So in that order, Po'okele, if you could unmute your, if you could unmute and ask your question?
Hello.
Okay, go ahead, we can hear you.
Hi, Madam Chair, thank you for giving me the, um, the two minutes for speak, I'm gonna try and make this quick. I get a couple of concerns, um, you know, you know, as far as Tiana Wilbur said, I know that this discussion was open about Kahali homes, which started out as a, like, as an idea at the Waimea Neighborhood Board. I watched that board online, John Mizuno and his representative came to speak. I think that with this Nanakuli Neighborhood Board, he chose not to come for whatever reasons. So there's just a lot of um, questions in my mind, you know? And like the lady said earlier, you know, my, my mortgage is four thousand five hundred for live on the west side of Oahu. I pass these homeless every day and honestly, with no disrespect, but it disgusts me. It disgusts me that things got this bad. Now as far as the Kahali homes, I heard one gentleman say earlier, it's a native Hawaiian problem. I don't agree with that. This is one drug, alcohol and one, um, this is one, one problem of drugs, alcohol and mental issues. So where is the plan in place to permanently fix this? Kahali homes, you're gonna take these people from the beach and put them someplace else? Now I get it, some people do need the help, ninety percent of them probably gonna not even wanna go. Then, then the other thing is, Blanch, thank you, you're doing an awesome job. Awesome. The problem is, is what is the plan on the west side? Do we, are we gonna have an Auntie Blanch and one team on these Kahali homes to guide them? To, to help them through? What is the plan? There's so much questions that we don't have answers to and that's why it's so hard. I told this Kahali and, and Uncle Rocky too, I mean, not Uncle Rocky, um, the guy that said, oh, we failing the people. Yeah, these adults, we're not failing them. What I mean, how we failing the people? I can't understand. How is it our responsibility for work hard?
Okay.
We gotta keep taking care of these people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Uh, okay, we're gonna move on to uh, Jax Gay.
Can I add to it?
Aloha.
Uh, no, 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 uh, Jax Gay and then Kapua, go ahead.
Aloha, I just, I, I wanna comment really quickly. First, Jermaine, you did a wonderful job, I thought the research was excellent. Um, but I wanna say this, first off, Kahali is not, you know, it's not a shelter for homeless. I am one of the houseless right now and um, it's not just druggies, it's not just criminals and it's, uh, the guy that just said he had four thousand dollar mortgage. He's like one paycheck away from being down there too. So I think, um, but here's my biggest point is, I'm not hearing a lot of solutions to alternatives. If we're talking about closing down the boat harbor and we're talking about closing down the farm, then where are all those people gonna go? Because I really don't believe that the governor and the mayor are gonna let you sweep all of us back to uh, to, to Waikiki. I just don't think it's gonna happen. And uh, you, maybe you think it's gonna happen, but I don't think so. So we're here. And, and so what is the solution? Right now, this is one solution where for the first time, we see the mayor and the governor working together and it's, it's not a permanent fix. I mean, some people will die there in the Kahalis, but we're not talking six hundred Kahalis, that's not true. And it's not on DHL. John's been very clear, Eric's been very clear, everybody said that was a mistake, it's not happening, that's taken off the table. So to argue something that's not even the issue anymore, come to the Waimea Neighborhood Board where you're actually getting correct information. Because we've actually, last week, uh, or two weeks ago, actually got it cleared and then the committee worked on it last week. So for us, it's like we are dealing with this issue and we're getting it clarified what it's going to be. And there is going to be Lena and the, and the Pukai Bay uh, uh, Community Council, they have been stepping up to get Auntie Blanch for the side identified. And Tiana Wilbur is, is, is one of the great nominees for that. She looks like she could, could get it done. And this is just something that's gonna be littler spots, sort of addressing each issue. One's a, a kapuna for fifteen and above opposite Waimea Camp on land that just already got homeless living in it. And that would be converted, another one is out behind the, uh, you know, uh, other areas, uh, near the mall and stuff. And so those are solutions that, and some of them may turn into late longer housing, but the little houses is a temporary solution uh, to transition. Some people will die in them, obviously, and so it would be a permanent solution for them in their lifetime. But I think we need to look at solutions. I hear a lot of people talking about things as if Nanakuli all the way to Makaha doesn't have homeless.
Thank you.
Appreciate you Samantha, thank you for having the heart to share this, mahalo.
Of course, thank you so much. Okay, uh, next up, Kapua, go ahead.
Aloha, babe. Mahalo, um, I've already got my manao in the text. So the real question is, you know, we have this problem, we have this situation, not only in our community, but on this whole island and throughout. But the real question is, there's a parity. Waimea Anai has already hosted successful programs. Who else besides Twinkles and Auntie Blanch have done this, you know, of their own personal commitment? So it's time that the state, fake state and this colony start looking at other communities. Because it's been said that all of these people are not ours as far as Waimea Anai, but they are ours because they are people. And so they need help. So how do we help them to change the paradigm that got them into this situation in the first place? And the state has failed to bring down the cost of living, to bring down the affordability of homes. You know, they continue to build homes, but the rich keep buying more homes. You build homes so that new time, first time homeowners can purchase the home. Not the rich people, because that does not help the program. So this fake state needs to go back to the problem and resolve the problem. Stop using Waimea Anai as the Band-Aid. Because we will continue to have this problem until they fix the problem. And that is affordability, employment, education, and the list goes on. So as I said, I'm available to help. I appreciate, totally appreciate uh, Jermaine's homework. So we can always count on her manao and everybody else that wants to kukua on this, because it's not gonna go away. So let's do what we can do and make sure there's parity. Why isn't other communities sharing this burden, sharing this aloha? This whole island should have aloha, not just Waimea Anai and Waimeanalo. So mahalo, Nui.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, very good. Uh, very last comment and then we're moving on.
Very last, this, this document, this, this email from Communication Transmitter from September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, supports what Board Chair, uh, Board Member, uh, Jermaine Myers has spoken about, SR thirty. SR thirty is equitable measurement with the partners, with Partners in Care for the whole island, not just in Waimea, not just in Ha'ula, not in Wahe'ua, but the entire island to serve. And I'll share this with, and put into the records for its part, of part of what Partners in Care has said. Because we have no obligation, uh, we also have no say in placement of services or shelters on Oahu. Partners in Care, I'll add this to your folks' record.
Very good, thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna close this section.
I wanna make one, one fast comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, DHL is not happening. That is one hundred percent positive, I just wanna let you know that. That's it.
Okay. Very good, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead and.
Just be like what Jolene said, be Akamai, read the proclamation. When the fire occurred, we lost a lot. We lost history. Thank you, Auntie Blanch, thank you, Waimeanalo. Auntie Leon, uh, Leona, you know my mom, but the thing is, uh, the state did a good job by pitting Hawaiians against Hawaiian. Um, even though the Act nineteen twenty-eight said it's for native Hawaiians, they did the blood quantum. Apologize, but we, yeah, we gotta get our local people in a home. In support to what, you know, um, In support to what, you know, Mizuno missed an epic moment. If I would have met him, I think it would have changed a lot. But guess what? You know what? As we know, it's clear, very clear, it's not gonna be on DHHL. So unless we get more clarity and we're part of this dialogue, otherwise, guess what? We're gonna still have homeless. We're gonna still be dumped on.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm moving on. So now that we were able to hear the community concerns, Board members' concerns, right now at this time, I'm gonna delegate this to our Housing and Zoning Committee Chair, David Corona, and Vice Chair Jermaine Myers to agendize this for discussion and to have more to be expressed with the Hawaii Kahali Initiative in order to create a resolution for our Board to consider adopting at our September Board meeting. So I will agendize in September two separate meetings. One, our Housing and Zoning Committee proposed resolution on Kahali initiatives for Board consideration. And two, I will invite and agendize for Mr. Mizuno to give a presentation on the State of Hawaii Kahali Initiative. Jermaine or David, to confirm, they will agendize a special Housing and Zoning Committee meeting as soon as possible, discuss and create a Kahali Initiative resolution for Board consideration and approval at September's Board meeting. Before I pass that over, I just wanna make this very clear, that the next step is for this to be held in committee. When it does come back to our full Board, we will be making a decision. I don't wanna rehash this conversation. It's unfortunate that Mr. Mizuno was not here in person. For whatever reason, I appreciate people that are standing in support of this. But this is not coming from the man himself. So thank you very much for weighing in on your responses. But at this point, everything at this point is just dialogue. Unless we hear it from him himself, to me, everything is continuing to be on the table. So right now, as I move this over to our committee, community and Mizuno staff, and Mr. Mizuno is welcome to weigh in at that committee meeting. But when it does come back to this full Board, it will be for voting purposes only. It will not be for presentation. I cannot give this time again. And for Mr. Mizuno not to respect our community's time, our Board time, and hear the heart of what our people have to say. These are not things that you can write minutes on and send in an email. These are things that you have to feel. These are things that you have to hear. And I'm very disappointed that he did not make the time to hear this, which is why I'm not gonna agendize it in a presentation matter. Because it's not fair to our community that we come back and spend more time when we could be spending it with our families. So Board Member Myers, can you confirm and agendize this?
Yes, I'll coordinate with Chair David. He's out of state. So when he comes back, we need to do, agendize a special meeting. And then if you can watch the Neighborhood Commission Committee agendas for Nanakuli Maili Neighborhood Board for it to be posted. We also have a social media where you can go on our Instagram for that information if you wanna come to the committee to weigh in. So that when we create the resolution from that committee and then it comes to the full Board for voting. So we'll go ahead and do that. Mahalo.
Very good. Thank you, Board Member Myers. Okay, we're gonna be going ahead and moving on. Again, I just wanna thank everybody who spent the time to drive here. Thank you very much for being here. Please drive safely. We have extra enforcement out there, so drive smart. All right, very good. We're gonna move on to officials' monthly reports. We've got 23 minutes left. So if I can ask if you can summarize your, if you can summarize your report? And then we're actually not going to be giving Q and A. We're not gonna be doing question and answers. Okay, so go ahead, Gary.
Hi, everybody. Gary Yamashroya. I'm here on behalf of the administration. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about the...
Sorry, if I can have quiet in the room, we have Governor's rep that's giving his report. So please, if I can ask everybody to just be quiet. You're more than welcome to carry on the discussion outside.
So there was...
Very good. Go ahead.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about the inoperable sirens. So I have an update. So the procurement process is wrapping up. And there'll be a warning contract on September 6. And the siren equipment has been ordered from the vendor. So hopefully, not much later than that, they should be working on it. So that's a positive. I will keep you updated on the progress of that. The other thing, I'm not sure if it was brought up at the full meeting or if it was a question about the school libraries. So the question was whether the school libraries were going to be phased out. I did reach out to DOE and they said that there is no, there is no plans to phase out school libraries. In fact, the Complex Area Superintendent definitively said that there are no plans to do so. But in fact, that the principals are going to be trained on how to better utilize school libraries. So that's a positive thing too.
Great, very good. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, we're not gonna be taking questions tonight, but we know how to reach you. So thank you very much. All right, Mayor's Rep, go ahead. Thank you, Erwin, for being with us.
Good evening, Chair and Members. I just wanted to respond to some of the questions that came up in last month, specifically the Economic Development Project on 86220 Farrington Highway. That property is currently being used by the City and Department of Environmental Services for the storage of refuse bins. They are going to be moving those bins to another location to free up that site. Also, there were some questions about narrow street parking on Pua Avenue. DTS has informed us that that particular street does belong, under the jurisdiction of Department of Hawaiian Homelands, and they've referred that concern to DHHL. And that's all I've had.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Erwin. Let's go ahead and move on to... Oh, I'm sorry, for the water. Apologies.
For water supply, there weren't any main breaks for last month. There is a household questionnaire that people are willing, welcome to answer. It provides us information on how people pay their bills and try to, you know, get their water bills paid. And it will be good information for us to get. So everyone is welcome to answer or respond to that questionnaire. That's all.
Very good. Thank you very much. Up next is our Councilwoman, Andrea Tupola. Thank you so much. We're just gonna have the report, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. First off, I wanted to share just the handouts that I gave you. So I shared about, sorry, I feel a little flustered, guys. Let me pull it together here. Oh, boy. I'm just saying, people wanna make statements and then walk away. So I'm good to keep, you know, talking about any other issues. Okay, let me, let me focus. First thing is that tomorrow night, we're having a youth empowerment town hall, Yani High School. Okay? Dinner is from 5:00 to 6:00. I've invited all the sports teams to come. I told them, come in their uniform, come with their coaches. We have all of the schools confirmed as far as administration, you know, police. But I will say that the meeting is for the youth. So we want the youth to speak. We wanna listen to the youth. We're gonna have breakout groups. We have facilitators for each group. We're gonna have chart paper. We're gonna take notes. We're gonna make a plan moving forward. I'm gonna email everybody the plan. Like, this is some organized crap that we're doing. Yeah, so it's not gonna be a vent session for two hours. We're gonna listen to the youth, see what suggestions they have, and then see how to move forward together as a community. So if you wanna come as an adult, we'll have an adult breakout group. We are not putting the kids with adults so that they feel more freely to speak, so that they speak openly. I'm also dividing them up by schools. In the event that particular schools have particular problems, and I'm also dividing them by ages so that they don't feel like they can't talk in front of like older kids or whatever it is. So we are being mindful about it. I am partnering with Rep Kila and Rep Gates to do it. But everyone's invited, Senator, we want you to be there. We want everyone to be there. This is not a us in them, this is a all of us. Yeah? So praying for our community. Love our kids. We want our youth to succeed. Not every youth is like this. I have had to push back on many statements made about our community, even today in the meetings I was in. And I don't think people see that, what kind of fighting that I have to do behind closed doors. I wish I could share all my Zoom calls with you. You would be appalled. But I'm just letting you know. I'm not gonna let our communities not receive the help we need. And I'm not gonna stand out if we're not getting enough resources that we need. I am gonna be speaking up about that. Even if people push back, I'm still gonna go. It's fine. Secondly, I shared that there's a cleanup. The cleanup is on September 7. We are going from bathroom to bathroom at sewers. So the burnt bathroom to the other bathroom. Okay? And that's the area that we're going to be clearing, and it will be closed for one month after that. You know why? Because after we do cleanups, the land needs to heal. It really does. It needs to rest. It needs to heal. And we are putting up fencing so that from bathroom to bathroom, it's closed. And 99.9% sure, we're gonna demo that bathroom. You know, the burnt one that cooks drugs inside? Yeah, that's gonna be gone. So I feel like in that area, right, we need some healing. So if you wanna join us, you can. I put forward Bill 41. So I introduced a bill about animal outreach, a huge part of my homeless outreach. And I will clarify, I'm never against any homelessness. I run a homeless outreach, which is what I just said outside, four days a week. Monday, Thursday, we're at River of Life from 12:00 to 1:00. Monday, Wednesday, we're at the LMS Church from 5:00 to 6:00. We actively serve. And to Board Member Jermaine's point, I have a report for every cohort that I've held. How many people came? How many people we housed? Where they were from? I really think that's something the city should do for all of their projects so that we can see the outcome. I have readily shared these reports because I want you to know every 16 weeks, what project progress are we making? And you can visually see the progress. Look from Kauai Hona all the way to Ulehava. What do you see? Nothing. That's what progress looks like. Two years of doing that. It wasn't even a month. That was two years that people in my office stayed after work. And we go from 5:00 to 6:00 during our off time to try to help. And you know why? Because we wanna see a visual difference. We wanna restore beach parks to the public. We wanna reconnect individuals with resources. And we wanna revive how we do outreach. And to Jolynn's point, it's true. It's true that not everybody wants to come. And that's why we just keep going out. Like, we never stop. You know what? Some of the guys that I talked to, the first cohort, which was August 2022, they only came around this year. Meaning, they only came around to agree to go into housing and agree to get a job. It took a little bit of time. And we've been working in the same area. You know, I walk from that bathroom to Hakemo like twice a week. I talk to all of them. When I walk on that beach, literally, people come out of their tents. They're like, Auntie Tupola's here. You guys better get outside. I was like, hello, everybody, it's Monday. Let's go to the church, to the church. We serve hot meals, we give resources. Everyone knows when I walk out there, what's going on. So anyone's welcome to go. You have the flyer right there. If... The last thing I'll say is my four statements about, I'm not gonna say the word. I refuse to say the word because that Hawaiian word is being abused. I'm gonna call it communal living projects. Here's my four stances on communal living projects. One, I will support four that are currently in the community. Pua Honua, Yani. That will take all the energy, all the effort, and all the resources we have to relocate everyone out of the boat harbor. And I said it in the press conference, that I'm gonna work on a plan to do that. We're gonna work on a timeline and a plan. I was up at the property twice this week, twice last week. I'm gonna make a clear plan with them and with, you know, the state so that we can relocate those resources. Second, Kamakouku in Kalailoa. Third, the Assembly of God property in Yani. And fourth, Cedars, which has a lot of problems, but I've committed to the Korean church that I will help them. Why am I not supporting other ones? You know why? Because no one told me where. Tell me the property. Tell me the nonprofit. Tell me the plan, and I'll tell you if I support you. I said that outside to everyone too. I am not against any communal living projects. But did you guys hear any specific places? I need to know where, what, when, who? Because I can't just support random things with no details. I can't do that. So those are my stances on that. And I love everyone, even these guys.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. She, that, yes, very good. We're gonna have, oh, I apologize, Councilwoman, we're not taking questions. We're gonna just move on and move on. So go ahead, please, Senator Cross Crab, if you can give your report.
Hello, hi, everyone. My name is Senator Cross McCunney Crab. I was newly appointed on July 30 by Governor Green to fill out the remainder of Senator Malishima Bookro's term until November 5. So that is what I'm doing. I would like people to know that I've been working very hard since getting appointed. I have put out a newsletter already with some information. And my goal is to provide a newsletter each month until the rest of my term. Many people have been asking for town halls for different topics. A Yani Neighborhood Board member requested an education-related town hall. So I'll be reaching out to the Nanakuli Education Committee as well as the Yani Neighborhood Board Education Committee to put one on. And then last week, there was a community meeting slash discussion around the topic of Kahali. I was also asked to help put together a town hall related to, you know, either Kahali or homelessness. So I'll be also reaching out to the Yani Neighborhood Board Housing Committee as well as the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board Housing Committee to hopefully plan one out. I would also like to note that, again, my term is until November, but I still have responsibilities via legislation to do. So I am also willing and open for any conversations, for any type of legislation that wants to be drafted. And we can hopefully pass the information over to the next senator that will be taking office in November through the rest of their term. That is all I have. But again, if anyone would like to invite me to attend any type of meetings, any type of events in the Ma'ili, Nanakuli area, I am totally free to open. And my contact information is in here, as well as information about my staff. Mahalo.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Representative Darius Kila? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Chair Decort. I just, before giving my update, I do wanna acknowledge that you folks are doing a great job. You know, I was once a board member with some of you folks, and it's not easy. You had to think this job. And you folks are holding the dialogues in between the many meetings that we have as well. So please don't think I don't have your folks' back or I really support you folks. So I know what sacrifice it is. So thank you, folks. I think this is the first time since last, everything happening that of Twinkles passing away. So I just wanna publicly acknowledge that and just give my condolences to her, Ohana, and the way that things have shifted. As you folks seen, it's been a crazy 96 hours since Thursday evening. And I just am so grateful to have teamed up with our 96792 delegation to really answer the call. And I just, there are a lot of things that we can't share. But I hope when this is all said and done, I can give a really detailed timeline of the instances that occurred. And for folks who know, you don't ever see a governor step in the way that they have. So I would just ask that read between the lines that there is a new action plan ensuing. So just think about that. Tomorrow, Andrea said it the best, we have our youth center town hall. And I went on the news this evening and I shared that this is really the place that we're looking to uplift our youth. And we're very intentional about that. So I invite all the community to come and bring your keke. But knowing that this really is a youth-centered event. I want to update that the left turn signal light at Kauka Monastery is finally operational. That started, I think, the first month I got elected into office and even prior, under Rep Eli. Like, it's been so long, but now it's finally operational. So all the way from that stretch of Ma'ili, every light now has a directional turn signal. My next town hall is August 27 with DHHL. I'm happy to hear that any homeless conversations around Kahali have stepped away. But to Chair Decort's point, I wanna hear that from John. August 27, 5:00 PM at Ma'ili Learning Center. August 27th, 5:00 PM at Ma'ili Learning Center. But, so usually we start at 6:00, but the 5:00 to 6:00 PM time slot is for beneficiaries to actually meet with staff to discuss succession, wait lists, and any specific items that you have for them. So please note that. And then from 6:00 to 8:00, we'll have the facility at the town hall to give an update on where DHHL is at the last year. And then in coordination with Councilmember Tupola, on September 16th, at 6:30 PM at Nonakuli High and Intermediate School, we're doing a school safety town hall, and I wanna harper on the fact that this is solely based for the Nonakuli Ma'ili complex. And so the discussions will be focused around the schools in our district. And then some other things that I wanna just publicly share, as you folks know, transportation is always the most forefronting issue to us. So I wanna, uh, let the community know, if you wanna report a highway problem, highway, highway is defined as Farrington Highway. Oahu number is 808-831-6714, 808-831-6714. After working hours, please call 808-485-6200. Or if you'd like to email, it's complaint@highwayowaho@hawaii.gov. And then lastly, finally, Department of Hawaiian Homelands has sent a map of the homestead safety mitigation measures that they've mapped out. And now at this point, I need to work with DOT to confirm if they can assist the department to see some of those plans through. And thank you, folks, again.
Very good. Thank you very much, Representative Keela. Thank you. Moving on to Army Representative Lieutenant Colonel Jason Cappas. Uh, thank you very much for being in person. What happened to your? Oh, there he is. Very good.
My XO, Josh Aspomall, he's joining in. Um, so Lieutenant Colonel Jason Cappas, US Army Representative, so three quick updates today. Uh, the next job hiring fair will take place September 17th at the AMR Gym. Also, notification, so our next big training exercise is upcoming. That happens in late September through October. That's JPMRC, the Joint Pacific Multinational readiness center. So this year, the initial forecast is about 1,000 member multinational partners that are gonna be joining us from Malaysia, New Zealand, Indonesia, Thailand, UK, Japan, Singapore, Maldives, Australia, and Canada, which is an increase from last time. So just please be aware, there'll be an increase of traffic and noise during that time. We try to minimize it as much as we can, but that's a lot of training that's gonna occur all the, all over the island. Finally, one of the notes, I was talking to one of my neighbors at, at NFL flag football my son plays in the community, and they didn't know that we had military blackout driving hours, where, where military vehicles can't be on the road, so I'd figure I'd share with the community. So from 5:00 AM to 8:30 AM, military vehicles can't be on major roadways. And from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, we can't be on the roadways too, to kinda get away from any increased traffic during those times. So just for awareness for the community. That's all I have, pending any questions, but no questions tonight.
Very good. No, no questions tonight. Thank you, but we know how to get in touch with you. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Navy Representative, uh... Well, since you're in person, I'm gonna have you go first, and then I'm gonna have, uh, Jules go. Okay, go ahead, Jewel.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jewel Felipe, and I'm representing Navy. So I actually sent in some slides to Brother Jeffrey, and I'm not sure if, if he has them ready to show up for our group. All right, there we go. So actually, this happened the day after the last time that we met up for a Nonakuli Neighborhood Board meeting. So Wednesday, July 17th. So the State of Hawaii has worked with Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam Hawaii to transfer wastewater treatment plant centrifuge to Maui County. So as we're speaking, it's actually on its way to Maui. And I actually, truly didn't know what centrifuge is, but these parts weigh nearly about 73,000 pounds each. And the centrifuges operate by separating water from digested sludge, so that the solid waste can properly be disposed of. So they, since they have this extra part at Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, they were kind enough to donate that to Maui County, so it can help and support their wastewater operations. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, and then this is the last point that I have. So this is free, open to the public. Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill is actually having an open house, so the public is invited to meet the team, learn about the current tank cleaning, ongoing closure operations, drinking water updates. You can speak with engineers, like the electricians, like the whole entire team will be there. Uh, I know the 30 minutes prior to this event, we live streaming it on the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam Facebook page. But if you have more questions in regards to Red Hill, Navy Closure Task Force, um, I have their contact information over on the right in green, their phone number, as well as their email. They are a separate office from the office that I work in, and as well as a website over there for more information. So all the details, again, that open house tomorrow, no registration needed, all free, all welcome to attend, and this is at Moana Dua Community Center. That's all I have to say. I'll push it over to Uncle Vic.
Okay, very good. Uncle Vic, you got one minute.
Got it.
She didn't give you much. She didn't give you much.
I'm bad, sorry.
Good job, Jewel. Victor Flint, Naval Facilities, RIMPAC finished up, June 27th through April 1st. The largest maritime exercise in the world. Part of that is emergency response. When we have heavy, heavy weather events or other catastrophes, the Navy's there to help. Speaking of heavy weather, this weekend, we have a tropical depression that's heading our way. And, uh, we're ready, if we get the call, to help. We pray for the best, but we prepare for the worst. Last, kole kole, clear and passable in case of a declared emergency. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for myself or Jewel?
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, so we are gonna move on to board business. Uh, board business, approval for Nonakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board Number 36 to participate in the Nonakuli Homecoming Parade on October 4th. Oh, I apologize, that's supposed to be 2024. Okay, um, we did participate in there last year. Excuse me?
Jewel Takuda.
She's not on the agenda.
Yeah, but I made it...
But thank you for acknowledging that. Uh, I will work with her office to be on the agenda next month, okay? Uh, so again, we are at board business. Uh, last year, we did participate in the, uh, Nonakuli Homecoming Parade, um, and it was great. Uh, so we were invited back as a neighborhood board to walk with, uh, the Homecoming Parade. So I would like to, uh, make a motion for us to participate again, and we'll take a vote. I do wanna encourage everybody, okay, go ahead. I can't even go there.
I make a motion to participate for the Nonakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board to participate in the Nonakuli High and Intermediate School Homecoming Parade on October 4th, from First Road up to the high school.
Second.
Okay, very good. Um, we have a vote and a second. I think it's safe to take a voice vote. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, all those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, uh, the motion passes. Uh, we will participate in the Nonakuli Ma'ili, uh, sorry, uh, Nonakuli Homecoming Parade on October 4th. Uh, we will get details. Yep. Okay, and then, um, uh, for the approval of minutes, it was brought to my attention, there were many errors. Uh, so I will have to defer that to next month's, uh, agenda. And let's see, okay, we've got two more minutes. July 2024, Board Member, uh, attendance on community meetings. I'll pass it over to Jeffrey in the remaining 60 seconds that we have.
All right, so let's go on the table. Uh, Member Polio. Could use your microphone, Board Member.
July 23rd, the City of Edmonds in the State of Washington. A public meeting with Chief and Deputy Chief of the Edmonds Police Department regarding the SRO program.
Board Member Myers?
I went to the Hawaiian Homes, uh, meeting at DHHL. Uh, I, let me look at the dates. Monday and Tuesday, oh, July 20, sorry, I don't, guess I don't have my calendar. Third Monday, third Tuesday. The 6th, the 15th and the 16th. And then I also attended a Department of, I mean, the Department of Interior Meeting on July 2nd. Um, and then, is it on, yeah, July 2nd. And then, uh, I think that's it for me, for now. Mahalo.
Member Techor?
I attended the Alulike, um, Naleo Aloha on Nonakuli, um, the 24th, 22nd was the Hawaiian Civic Club. I did vote primary. NHIS registration, return, um, students, uh, the first week of July, and town hall meeting with Darius Keela, the Department of Transportation.
Chair Decort?
Uh, it's actually time right now, 10:00 PM. So we're gonna go ahead and defer the remaining, uh, part of this agenda to next month's agenda. Uh, at this point, uh, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Our next regular neighborhood board meeting is Tuesday, September 17th, uh, 2024, at 7:00 PM, Nonakuli Public Library and Via Webex. Uh, mahalo, drive safely and good night.